July of 2009, that's the darker green areas. And what we've done is we've added to that map and looked at all the industrial areas within our community. And so the light green hashed areas are areas that are either zoned today for I-1 or planned for I-1 zoning, at least at the general plan level. Most of them are actually zoned. So those would be areas that we also want to propose to encourage speculative buildings to be built. The pink area is an area where keeping in mind that we want to limit certain types of uses along certain corridors, and that, of course, would be that airport employment corridor along the Bullard Avenue corridor. And so there, that's a high wage or manufacturing industry designation. So what I wanted to do was to go through a little definition, a brief definition of how we would lay this out. In those light green areas, we're proposing that if a builder wants to build at least a 200,000 square foot building in the next five years, and actually, our policy states within three years have the building leased at a temporary COO occupancy to encourage them, then that would allow them to market that space or that building as a foreign trade zone site that's already approved by our council administratively if you adopt this policy. Once again, that's in the I-1 zoning districts that are designated on the map. Or it could be, some of those areas may include I-2, but the incentive would only be provided for an I-1 use unless it comes back to the council. And that would be for the first user only. So if a user came and someone built a spec building, and we had a developer build one of the spec buildings, and a user came in, it would be for that first user. If that user at some point left, then it wouldn't be automatically approved. It would have to come back before the council if it was a user that the council deemed that they wanted to provide the incentive for. One of the things that we wanted to do also was to make sure we reached out to some targeted industries, most that we could, with this policy. And it's really designed, for our purposes, largely for manufacturing, which are those higher wage jobs and those higher capital investments that yield more revenues to the city. And we want to do that in certain areas where only it would be manufacturing. So we looked at a policy that the state has with some of the programs that's approved in the past, such as the Qualified Facility Program, where it's targeting as well manufacturing jobs and requiring that 51% of those jobs pay 125% of the state median wage, which is a job between $42,000 and $43,000 annually. So it meets our high wage standard and also have a capital investment of $25 million.
Okay. I appreciate that. Appreciate you defining that because when I was looking at this, I thought it was too broad and vague. I mean, you know, whose definition of what this means? And so you're saying that there is an actual defining amount out there for both of these categories, correct?
There is, yeah. And many of these programs, we have looked at the state programs and work that they've done in the past. And so they've done a lot of analysis to determine what is a revenue positive job over time. And so those programs are designed for that. And so we certainly are trying to target and want to reach out to that industry to where we let the industry know that we're encouraging manufacturing to be built in our community. And so this does that, but also at the same time, we have those requirements where if they're going to locate in the pink area, we want to make sure that they meet those high wage requirements and those high capital investment requirements.
So will that kill? One time, we had some conversation out there on the developer side, and I think Curtis brought it up about worrying about we were not welcoming fulfillment centers and warehousing. So this sort of solves that, right? It puts everything in its perspective? Or will we still have that conversation in there?
Mayor, that's a very good point. And Curtis is probably on the line, but I do want to make the point, yeah, it reaches out to manufacturing, so we want them to know, and especially in our certain area, it can only be that manufacturing that meets those requirements that is administratively approved. So it does help us do both. It helps us to reach out to manufacturing, but also, we are still open to other types of users, such as warehouse industry, if they're building a spec building. You know, and the developer builds that spec building, they meet the wage requirements, or excuse me, the requirements that the federal government has, then they can qualify for the foreign trade zone for a limited period of time. That's one of the key distinctions we want to make here and make sure everyone understands is in the pink area, and if you're a manufacturer that want to locate anywhere in the green area, if you meet those high wage and high capital investment standards, there's not a time limit. You know, we're encouraging that because we're always going to be targeting those.
Joe?
If it's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I interrupted you, sorry.
Go ahead and finish.
If it's a different type of user, say it's the warehouse, internet fulfillment, and they don't meet some of the requirements we have for internet fulfillment, which I'll talk about in a minute, then there will be a time limit on that billing in which it could be administratively accepted as a foreign trade zone site. So we're giving that five-year period, trying to encourage developers to build buildings. It may be a building that is built and it's versatile enough that a manufacturer could locate there. It may be a building where we could have internet fulfillment or a decent standard warehouses locate there. But those are limited to a five-year period of time, unless it's internet fulfillment and they meet a high wage or a high capital investment standard and a high Arizona end-user sales tax. One of the things we wanted to recognize with internet fulfillment is we're all experiencing the change in consumer patterns today, where more and more, we're seeing online sales continue to increase. In fact, during the downturn, I believe, every year was double-digit increases in growth in online sales. So that's having an impact. And so we do want to target that industry where it makes sense for us and there's a high enough impact. And so one of the limits that we put on that was a capital investment of at least $25 million and also an Arizona end-user sales tax requirement, meaning that if they sell anywhere in Arizona to an end user, someone's buying online and for their business, they're using their business not to sell to someone else, but to use in their business, or someone that just in the household is buying online and it's an end-user sale, an actual retail sale, and the City of Goodyear would get those taxes from that.
Joe?
On the internet fulfillment, they have to still have the high salary requirements?
Yeah, we have not put a high salary requirement on internet fulfillment.
Okay, and the reason why? Because they wouldn't make it, correct?
Exactly. Yeah, it's more about the retail sales tax than it is about the type of job.
And that's my other question. Do we really get sales tax from these fulfillment centers if their only location is here and not anywhere else in the state?
You're right. There's not a lot of them that are going to meet that requirement administratively. Now, it doesn't limit us from coming back to the council if there's one that's close or it is something that council wants to consider. We could come back and ask that they be approved at a lower sales. That would be something to come back to council. There are some, yes, that meet those, that have those kinds of sales.
The only reason I ask that question is, kind of go back internally, is what's the value of the internet fulfillment centers from a job standpoint? Yeah, the dollars they're going to pay is less. What kind of revenue are we really generating for that, for what you're giving up here within a foreign trade zone? Because especially the way the law is set up right now, if the internet fulfillment was in Phoenix and they were selling to us, we would still get the sales tax if they had a, it's my understanding, we'd still get the sales tax if they had a presence in the state because of where the end user is going. Is that correct, Larry? It's not necessarily where the fulfillment center is, it's where it's going. And I guess that's, again, I still am, you know, kind of not sure what the value is on the internet fulfillment centers, I guess is what I'm getting at.
Very good point. My understanding from talking with Joe Lewandowski, and we've gone over this several different times, is if it's located in our city, they sell anywhere in Arizona to an end user, and the facility's located here where that point of sale is at, then we're eligible to receive, we should receive, that portion of the City of Goodyear sales tax.
Is it where it's going to or is where the order is leaving?
Where the sale is at in the city where the internet fulfillment center is located.
When Macy's builds her department store, then.
But I mean, for example, you have an internet fulfillment center where they're taking phone calls all over the United States. If it leaves the center in Goodyear, is Goodyear getting the tax or is the tax going to wherever it's ending up? That's kind of my...
That's where you get down a lot of those details, exactly, you know, where's the point of sale at. But if it is located here and even though they may be ordering online from somewhere else, but they're ordering here in Arizona, I'm not sure about all of their different, you know, where they may be calling to, but if it's coming out of the facility here, what I'm told is that's where we get that sales tax.
Okay, because I always thought it was the end, so, okay.
Yeah, so we can drill deeper, but every question I've asked Joe that many times, and that's the response I've gotten.
I have a question. On any of these pieces of property, how long, say, somebody comes in, wants to open a manufacturing company, purchase it, but doesn't yet? So, you know, do we have a limitation on our contracts, on time, that they can hold on to that land, or can they hold on to as long as they want?
So I'm trying to under...
Okay, so, you know, there's a company, I think there's one of these pieces of land that's been sold already that I'm assuming still happened. They haven't developed anything on it.
On EJM property?
No, I thought it was on the other, but on 303, am I wrong?
Oh, yes, I think I know what you're talking about.
Yes, okay. Here, here, we have that. Okay, so I say, you know, so somebody comes in, right now, it probably isn't so as important as it will be later as we build on 303 and as we don't have as much land left to bring a project in. We don't have, you know, we don't have anything, it's a time limit. You know, sometimes you buy a home site, you know, in some areas, they have, you've got to build on it in two years, all right? So you have to put some structure on it for years, but we don't have anything like that. So they can tie up the land a long, very long time, so that's my question.
Mayor Lord, this is Curtis Spencer, if I might. I want to comment on both the questions that were asked just recently. First of all, to the time limit. On the existing sites, there is no time limit. However, you brought up a very good point that you should maybe look at in reverse, which is, once you're out of the land that has no time limit, then you're out of the land that has no time limit. And so you, as a city, you could potentially get into a less than competitive position because of that. And right now, the 303 west portion, the west half of the 303, that 100 acres, is all consumed. The east half is not. So half of that site's gone, and just like you pointed out, a portion of, you know, 20 to 25 acres of the EJM site now has been called for, and they are activating. So they will be an activated operator for City of Goodyear. So I wanted to make that point about the time limit in that the policy that you're looking at today does have a time limit. And as I requested it, I requested it to be a time limit that was incumbent upon each applicant's request. Staff has chosen to make the time limit fixed. The problem with the fixed time limit, I think, is that you're going to have situations where each developer who's making their request is going to start from a time perspective that they have ready to build a spec building, which may not coincide with the fixed three years that the city is now anticipating. And so I asked for that to be changed, but it has not been. And I think that it allows more flexibility without adding to the total number of acres that can qualify, because that's fixed by the map. But it allows each developer group to come forward and seek the pre-letter. So I think that's something that the council should consider, whether or not it's a floating three years versus a fixed three years, because the economy is not a fixed entity. Just like six weeks ago, we were paying $100 for a barrel of oil, today we're paying $70 for a barrel of oil. How many of you know how long that will last? I don't. So the first question that I would say is that we should discuss a moving target three years per applicant request.
Thank you, thank you. I've got this last to think about.
Yes, our rationale was that we wanted to encourage buildings to be built today.
In the near term.
In the near term. And so certainly, we understand where Curtis is coming from in the development industry, but we wanted to encourage buildings to be built today.
Well, I guess what, and Curtis, I respect your opinion on this, so I don't want you to think I'm just throwing this aside at all, but being a salesperson, you know, being a salesperson by heart here, I love it when there's a little pressure on it, and it builds value. And so that's, you know, I've always been a pro person for that, and seems to, my experience has been well worth it. But, you know, of course, I wasn't selling homes or land for manufacturing companies or in the commercial end, so, you know, I respect your opinion. I'd have to think about it, though. Go ahead, Harry.
Okay. All I ask is that you all think about those things. And I also have one other one that pertains to Harry's presentation there. First user only in the spec building. I want to make sure of two things that you guys consider. In all of the previous times that we've talked to school districts and discussed this, I want to make sure that everybody understands that that's the first activating user. It may not necessarily be the first occupant of that building. And we've explained this to the school districts and the community colleges, county, all in the same manner, in that a spec building is built, that's a huge risk for the developer. Then along comes someone who wants to use it, that for whatever reason, either doesn't qualify or doesn't want to be in a foreign trade zone and still occupies the building. That shouldn't change the fact that the first building, or that the building has your approval for the FTZ, and then after that three years that that lessee has been in the building and gone out of the building, now along comes a new lessee, which is good because you don't want an empty building in your area, not producing anything or hiring any people. They come along and they want to activate the building. So I think, I just want to make sure that it's clear that the first FTZ user in that building.
We, I think, Sherry?
I just had a question on the time limit that he was talking about. Is there something built in that if the economy does falter or something happens, that it can come back and we can extend that? Would that be part of it? I mean, would it be a...
That would be exactly what I would want, yes, ma'am.
So Mayor and Council, how it's structured today is, it does have a built-in timeframe, and as was explained, the intent is really to encourage that near-term spec building development and that infrastructure investment that we want to see today. We do have the flexibility with this policy in place, whether it's now or after the temporary policy expires, to bring back any user-driven site to council for consideration. And so the advantage here is to encourage that investment right now and have that ability to market it as foreign trade zone eligible. So while there's not something in there that says we could extend it, that this policy, especially as it refers to the hashed green area, does have that five-year time limit on it, but we can always come back to council if it's been working well and we want to extend it. We do have the flexibility to come back and discuss that with the council then.
So we're not closing any door?
Correct.
Okay. Joe?
We talked a little bit before we started, and it comes to the buy-off, where the school has to buy off in the school districts, and I don't know if college districts have to buy in. And the question I asked you is, what happens if they don't agree? What's the process? And your response was?
We haven't faced that yet. It's a good question. What's required now by the federal government is that each taxing jurisdiction on the tax bill sends a letter of, they're not opposed to foreign trade zone. And so we're bringing this before the council and asking the council to provide this incentive if companies meet these certain requirements or developers meet these requirements. But that's not where it stops. It, you know, it's not done then. It's got to, they've got to go to each of the different taxing jurisdictions and get a letter. If the case would happen where maybe a school district didn't want to provide it, maybe one did, one didn't, or one taxing jurisdiction, maybe a special jurisdiction, like say maybe Wesmac or something that didn't want to provide it, then that would be something that the property owner or the company would have to work with on an appeal process, or they may do something similar to what we've done with our pilot program to where maybe they have to make a payment. And so that is a situation which we haven't dealt with yet in our zone. It could happen at some point. Today, we have support, we've met with two of our school districts, the Yavondale Elementary School District and our Freya School District, and they've been supportive. We're meeting on Wednesday with Litchfield, which covers the northern portion of our city. They've been very supportive in the past as well. So we expect we'll continue to get support, but that could happen at some point.
There are no federal rules as far as a process and appeal and an arbitrator or anything like that. It's just going to have to work out the deal with the school district.
Curtis, you might be able to answer that question better than I could.
Yeah, I mean, no, the FTZ board is going to make sure that all local decisions are made at a local basis, and they won't even get into arbitrate. However, you know, there's always a way to work it out. Some of the school districts just need to, you know, there was a donation, I think Riverside School requires a $20,000 a year donation to the school. There are other things that happen, but mostly in the West Valley, it's been 100% acceptance.
And just to that point, as Harry mentioned, we have been having the meetings, so the districts are aware of what we are proposing. And what this policy would do is provide automatic city support, so it wouldn't have us coming back to council for each recommendation or each letter of support, but they still have to go through that same process. And that way, the school districts are aware of what we are asking the council to administratively support, and they've been well received as well.
I think we showed that, even though that's not, wasn't purchased through FTZ, Cancer Treatments of America, but it did show that we came to solutions on the schools and taxes. And I think that's a good example of doing the right thing. And I think we've done so many of them now, I think that's just part of our culture and our policy. So I really don't put a great fear unless the state or the federal get in it, and then I can't answer for that. Bill?
I just want to get it on the record about the schools, that's all.
Bill?
I'm having a hard time, I'm going to say visualizing what Curtis's concerns are and how we've managed to meet those. And I certainly don't want to, if there's a debate involved in this, is there a way we at least get that information, or is there a simple explanation to that? I just, I'm having a hard time.
Councilor Sip, I think I could probably summarize it like this. We have a three-year time limit for a developer to get a temporary COO on a building. If, for example, maybe the developer waits two years, two and a half years, they're not able to get that COO, that temporary COO, by the end of year three, then by our policy...
Explain to the public what that means.
Yeah, the temporary COOs, they basically have the building constructed and just about ready for occupancy.
It's a certificate of occupancy.
Right, yes. Of occupancy, excuse me, yeah, I use those terms sometimes too easily. Yeah, certificate of occupancy, meaning that we've approved the building for, at least at a certain level, maybe just a shell temporary certificate of occupancy, which is generally how a spec building is built. Then they might be three and a half years into it, and then would they qualify? And that situation, we'd probably bring it back before the council, as Kim suggested, and ask the council to make a decision on that.
Yeah, I don't know what, I think that it isn't lost, right? I mean, the fact matter, if there's some financial difficulty or the market goes down or anything like we've had to do in this last five years, it can be done. So it's not in stone, but one thing I like, Curtis, I like the flexibility of all of this. And certainly, you know that we want to build and fill, so we're not trying to put up any roadblocks, but, you know, from all the things that's happened to us in the last eight years, I think flexibility is the word for it, that we are able to take different actions and be creative, and we've had to be. And I don't want walls put up on that. I want us to be able to have that freedom, especially in the market, because it's still a huge question. Bill?
So my follow-up to that may actually be to Curtis.
Sure.
Your concerns about the current policy and the way that we've addressed it, while it's not what you necessarily suggested, do you see it being a roadblock to anything?
Well, honestly, the devil is in the details, as always. I was hoping that after I made my appearance there with you guys and we did the work session in June, that we would have had this policy in July and voted on, ready to go in August. And as you guys can tell, we didn't make that. We didn't even make close to that. So now we're looking at starting the policy in January. So again, I think that, you know, to Mayor Lord's point, if you guys want to remain as flexible and as clear, then I think specific council action on this should also include a directive to staff to complete the document in 30 days, to make the document easy to understand by all the different entities that may need to understand it. And I want you to think of site selectors, economic development professionals like Harry and Kim, and so that the policy doesn't come out as, you know, 20 pages of legalese that nobody can understand. So that's, you know, that would really go a long way to address my concerns.
Okay.
Is that council puts a specific timeline on this to get done, and council directs staff to make it easy to understand.
I'm going to recognize Kim a minute. You mind, Bill?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Kim?
Mayor and Council, it is our intent to bring the policy, considering the council feedback from today, back for consideration and hopefully approval in December, so within the 30 days that Curtis is referencing. And also, we have worked with Curtis on how we can make the policy clear. So we have our established policy that's in place today, and then also recognize the parameters for the temporary spec building policy as well as the longer-term manufacturing recruitment policy as well. So I believe we've...
Excellent.
Just one moment.
Excellent, thanks, Kim.
Yeah, we were just talking about the different marketing. So we also have marketing pieces, one sheets, that make it very understandable for the development community to understand what the benefits are.
All right, so we're actually giving him some tools then.
Correct.
All right, did you hear that, Curtis?
There you go.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, that's good, that's music to my ears.
Yeah, because I want you to sell too. We want some action here, so we want to be cooperative on this. So if that is going to help you, then we'll definitely, we're looking out for that. No questions, Bill?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Are you...
Yeah, and just to kind of close out, so what we heard, and again, we want the same flexibility as we've heard is important to council. This policy, as it's framed right now, does allow us to do that while also maintaining the flexibility to bring any foreign trade zone considerations to council that may not meet that criteria if we do believe it's of benefit to the city. But we will be working with, within the constraints of the zoning that's in place today as well as the land use. So just wanted to clarify that this does not alter anything that's in place today.
Joanne?
Thank you. I do have a question on, you hit upon zoning and land use. And I recall when we had that meeting, all of us around discussing this. And, you know, I'm completely behind foreign trade zones. I think this is a great tool for us, and I appreciate the thought that you've put behind this. I have one concern, and part of it is visualization of this map. And that is on the area, I mean, granted, we want to be able to use the Union Pacific Railroad, that's obvious. But on Estrella Parkway, headed up to Estrella, headed up to the mountains with the river right there, I think my one concern, and this is going to be back to what our defined ordinances and policies are of industrial standards, is the section that is so close to the river. And I just want to see, you know, protection of the riverbed, protection of what's going on in this area. And it was, industrial sites were not... And it was, industrial sites were not what I was visualizing headed up to Estrella Mountain. It just wasn't. And so, you know, as we look at these areas, it's sensitive to me. And I just want to make sure that we think about that. Because, you know, granted, on the 303, not a problem. You know, this is just, to me, is a sensitive area because of the location and the natural aspects of it, and then just, you know, going into the beauty of what we have of Estrella Mountain Ranch. And so, you know, I really want to feel comfortable about that. Okay?
And Mayor and Councilmember Osborne, I do want to also point out that this will, any projects that are brought forward will go through the site plan review process. And so we will be able to consider the environment and the entry point through design of the actual site plan and facility through landscaping and things like that. So we can note that for special attention in that area.
Well, and I know that the reason we're doing this ahead of time is because we want to go forward and we want to say, let's make this as easy for somebody to locate here. But at the same time, these are the sensitivities I have to this. And I don't want to, you know, I want to, you know, have in our minds that there's some kind of users that are going to be by a riverbed that you don't want to see any kind of concern over environmental issues there. So that's my thought.
Are you still talking about the three-year time limit, or is that disappearing?
It's our recommendation that the three years and then the total overall five years remain in place, knowing that we do have the flexibility at any time to bring something else back.
Is that, any other questions? All right. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Curtis.
Thank you, Mayor. Council.
Okay, let's go to item 3.2, the second one. On tonight's agenda is an update on the directional signage and public art plan for the Goodyear City Hall enhancements. Mark?
I'd like to call to order the Monday, November 17 meeting. And I'm on. There, I'm on. Good evening. I'd like to call to order, please, the regular meeting on Monday, November 17 at 6:00. Just to remind you, there'll be a special meeting immediately following this regular meeting. So would you please join Councilman Osborne in the pledge allegiance and invocation? And please stay standing.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, in this season of Thanksgiving, we thank you for the treasure of each and every day. Thank you for the blessings over our city and the lives of our citizens. Thank you for the strong who have stepped up to fight for our freedoms and the ones who protect our lives. Thank you for healing of the sick and support for the weary. And Father, please grant continual wisdom to this council and allow for thoughtful and meaningful dialogue. In your mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Osborne. We have no communications tonight, but it now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item. Before I do that, just let me mention to all of you that Councilman Campbell is on the telephone for the meeting tonight. Are you there, Wally?
Yes, Mayor, I am.
All right, welcome. Just speak up this evening if I seem to forget you one time or another, okay?
Okay, thank you.
So let me go back to the time for the citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda items. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. And we'll go right on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items 6.1 and 6.2 by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes from a special meeting held on October 20, 2014, and a regular meeting held on October 27, 2014. Item 6.2, adopt resolution 14-1676, authorizing the mayor and council of the city of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, to execute a memorandum of agreement with the U.S. Census Bureau to conduct a special census in the city of Goodyear.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Vice Mayor?
Don't want to remove it, but I think it's some value in it of staff, just kind of summarize real quick, 6.2, because there's a significant return on investment from moving forward with that census. And maybe some of them may have not heard that, so I, if you would, Katie?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's a great idea.
You can make it short and sweet, but what it's costing and what we expect the return to be as a result.
I guess the why.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Yes, we have a great opportunity to update our census numbers, which will then update our state shared revenues. The estimated cost is $1.4 million, and we anticipate that we will receive $7 million to $11 million over a five-year period. So we should see the return on that investment in our first year, but we anticipate to see a much greater over the five years. We did hold a work session on this item, and I don't have any updates for you since that work session.
That's all I was looking for, Katie.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Okay, then I'm going to ask for a first and a motion and a second. Do I hear it?
Second.
I heard it from a motion from Councilman Stip and a second from Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion? None? All right, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loritano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Homan?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Pass the 7-0.
Great, let's go on to the business and 7.1. First item is a public hearing to consider rezoning to amend 56.77 acres of the Palm Valley Phase 9 final planned area development. Public meeting open. Hector? Yes?
Mayor Lord, thank I'm Derek Kornier, Internet Services Director. I'd like to introduce Hector Tapi. He will be the first of several of the planning speakers tonight on these cases that we have before you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. The, tonight, we're presenting the amendment to the PAD Palm Valley Phase 9. And I'm going to show you the master plan, the overall area, and the existing PAD side layout, existing PAD land use categories. And they proposed side layout as proposed tonight. And the project legal notices and justification of requests, the findings, and the end will be the recommendations. The basic proposal, drawing out of the existing PAD on the Palm Valley Phase 9, does not include a land use category as requested by the Liberty Utilities. And so basically, will be a rezoning to amend the 56.77 acres of the Phase 9 final planned area development to add water recharge facility. As you can see, the area of the proposal is West Litchfield and North of Camelback and the, a little east of the existing golf course and northwest of the city of Litchfield Park. So the overall master plan of Palm Valley includes a whole area there north of the freeway. But the area in question tonight is only the area around the circle. That's the only area in question tonight. It's not the overall, amending the overall Palm Valley master plan. So the existing PAD side layout right now, at this time, includes a single-family residential on the east side and 20 lots for industrial land uses. So the existing layout and existing land uses as allowed right now is, as you can see on the slide, animal hospital and cabinet shop, carpenter shop, electrical sun shop, auto maintenance and garage. In addition to the existing land uses allowed on the PAD, also, they may allow public utility facilities. But after the request by Liberty Utilities, there was a little, we're trying to find if it's a public facility also include water recharge as part of the land uses. And based on the ordinance, according to the zoning ordinance, I recall two definitions. So actually, does not include the water recharge land use category. That's the reason why we're coming before you tonight, just to add an additional category to land use classification under the existing Phase 9 PAD designations. So the proposal layout by Liberty Utilities is to include an office, an office site, and on the north side, including the water recharge areas. So the overall proposal is to include those two land uses within the whole master plan. This is an example, a conceptual, the conceptual site for the office complex, for the corporate office and customer services location for Liberty Utilities. And this is the area where the water recharge facility is going to be placed. As you can see on the bottom, facing Camelback, that's going to be the office, the entrance. Also, I would like to add, between the proposed uses, it's going to be a 100-foot buffer between the future residential area to the east. So even though the scale of the map looks like it's kind of close, it's actually will be 100-foot buffer zone between the single-family homes that are right now under construction. And they came before you a few months ago to amend a couple of conditions to allow to store buildings and some lots. So during the initial process, we held a citizen review on September 30. In addition to that, we also mailed postcards to the neighborhood within 500 radius from the property. And we posted the site and also we published the proposal on the newspapers on September 26. The planning commission on October 15, they recommend for, they recommended for approval. They did have some questions, but basically, they liked the proposal and they wait for council to approve all these. So the purpose justification of requests, the existing 20 lots industrial park potentially may create more noise or more traffic into the area that the proposal that Liberty Utilities is trying to build in that location. Also, reducing the demand for central Arizona Project Water. Liberty Utilities, according to their narrative and explanation of the proposal, is that they're required to reduce the demand by CAP. So one of the things they're trying to do is to create this site so they can, in the future, be able to comply with the CAP requirements. The water recharge is an established and effective water management tool to recharge groundwater to meet the 100-year assured water supply. Also, again, they're trying to do to comply and also to plan for the future. A new Liberty Utilities corporate customer service in office in Goodyear, like I mentioned before, there will be a customer service location. And also, the site is going to be used for presenting and showing different type of water plants, you know, water use plants. And customer will be able to see the examples of how to minimize the water use in Goodyear. Also, looker force. Initially, they had concerns about the proposal, but the Liberty Utilities worked really close with them, and they agree how to design the facility to mitigate some of their concerns. One concern they have is potentially that creates some kind of birds coming into the area and flying into planes. But based on the other facilities that they have right now, they have mitigated the issues. And they're trying to do the same thing here. So based on our findings and our review, as I mentioned before, the new use is going to be, will create less traffic and it's going to be a future buffer zone between residential and the Liberty Utilities proposal. Looker force supports this request. They sent a letter, it's part of the attachments that are in the report. The PGA South and PGA North Superfunds. The Phoenix Gateway Airport South and the Phoenix Gateway North Superfunds. Basically, this, in the way they recharge water into the ground, the city, working with oil companies, they're trying to mitigate some of the future ground contamination. And based on the technical information that provided by Liberty Utilities, it will not affect what the city's trying to do in the mitigation of the water supply. The CLMRF is the conditional lateral map removal. By filling the site, it's going to increase the height of the site and remove it for FEMA flush zone. So that's what it means there, CLMR and FLMR through FEMA. So Liberty Utilities will have to apply through FEMA and remove the site through the FEMA maps. That's what it means. And also, the mutual cooperation between Liberty Utilities and City of Goodyear. Basically, Liberty Utilities provide water and sewer services to the city residents. So we work really close with them and trying to understand their proposal. And basically, they did a good job in presenting to us what we're trying to do. And so Planning Commission and city staff is recommending that, to approve the amended of Phase 9 final PAD to allow, to allow the water recharge land use category into the existing PAD. And also, if you have any questions, more technical question, we have the applicants present here representing Liberty Utilities. And also, Matthew Gallick is the Director of Operations for Liberty Utilities. He's also here. You have any questions for them? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tapi. Are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor.
I'll call out the cards, and you know that each speaker is limited to three minutes. The yellow light and the buzzer will let you know, sitting on the stand, that you have 30 seconds left to speak. Before you begin to speak, please identify yourself by clearly stating for the record your name and your address. So let's start out with Matthew Gallick. Welcome, Mr. Gallick.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Matthew Gallick. I'm with Liberty Utilities. I'm the Director of Operations for Arizona. Thank you for this afternoon, for allowing me to come in.
Could you speak up just a little bit, please?
Yeah, thank you for this opportunity to allow me to speak tonight. We are in support of the PAD amendment as provided in front of you tonight, as well as the stipulations that were put forward by the Planning and Zoning Committee. We appreciate their help in helping us get through this matter, as well as, we really want to bring this project to your attention for its long-term sustainability with our partner, Central Arizona Project. It's been a project that's gone on for several years. As a matter of fact, it's been about eight years in the making. This project will bring nice sustainability to those that live north by 10 in Goodyear. It allows us to beneficially reuse our water after we sold our effluent to our customers. That remaining effluent, which is great value to our community, can be put back into the ground, and it will start to assure our water supply north of I-10, as well as fill in a problematic hole that has developed within, underneath the Air Force Base over the last 60 years. It's very close proximity. It's about a mile away from that. So once again, we just appreciate it if you would approve our PAD tonight, and we just thank you for your time. And I'll be here to answer any questions if you need me back up. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Phelan? Thank you. Michael Phelan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Michael Phelan, 2394 East Camelback Road, Suite 600, Phoenix 85016. Here tonight representing Liberty Utilities, but since you already heard from Mr. Garlick, I didn't need to say anything further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, speakers have finished, no more cards, right? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. And will the city clerk please read ordinance by title only, please?
Adopt Ordinance Number 14-1313, amending 56.77 acres of the Palm Valley Phase 9 Final Planned Area Development located on the north side of Camelback Road between the Bullard Wash and 149th Avenue alignment to add water recharge facility as an additional permitted use under the Light Industrial Zoning Classification within the PAD and to add stipulations number 57, 58, and 59 to Ordinance Number 2006-1002 related to development of the property as a water recharge facility, amending the zoning map. The City of Goodyear providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion in a second?
No move.
A second. I heard a motion by Councilman Holman and a second by Councilman Loretano, open for council discussion. Councilman Stip.
Mayor, we were, I think all of us received the briefing from the applicant in the last couple of weeks. It was extremely detailed. And for me, the project is, we sat down and I essentially said, look, this is a no-brainer for me. I don't need to really spend a whole lot of time on it. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Number one is, this is a water project. And if this was a water project in our city, in our water delivery area, we wouldn't even be discussing this. We'd be getting it done and we'd be moving forward. And as I mentioned, for the last couple of weeks, if it's good for us, it's good for everyone else as well. So there's no double standard with that. But second, so to go along with that, the need for us, not just Liberty Water, but us as a region and us as a state to do everything that we absolutely can to keep the water that we use and return it to the aquifer, we need to support. This is an environmental issue, this is a rest-of-our-life issue, is supporting this type of development, if you will. And then the other reason for me that this really became a no-brainer was if you look at the water treatment plant that's on McDowell Road that was built and owned by, I think it was Lipsco at the time, but it is now really our partners in water. We have pictures of that facility on the walls in our city hall showcasing what a beautiful facility it is. As a matter of fact, in the briefing where we had, in the conference room where we had it, there was a picture of it right there. And looking at the proposed, I'm drawing a blank on what you call it, but the drawing, the preliminary drawing, there's no question in my mind that this recharge facility is going to be just as nice as the wastewater treatment facility that they currently operate. It's up in an area that was going to be industrial, and I think we heard tonight, it's obviously not going to have as much truck traffic, it's going to have, it's really going to be a good buffer for that area. And it's going to push the industrial just that much farther away from the homes. So for me, this is, it's a great project for the city, not because it's going to be glamorous and it's going to bring, you know, all these jobs and all this tax revenue, but it's absolutely the right thing to do for our environment and to support the essential piece of life that we have here, and that's water.
Well said. Thank you, Councilman Stip. Councilman Osborne.
Just to add to what Councilmember Stip said was, I appreciate the regionalism that Liberty took on this because this included Litchfield Park, this included the base, this included the city. And then the plumes that we had, a great deal of discussion to make sure that nothing was going to be affected by this issue. And so I really appreciate that, you know, knowing that there's netting against the birds, that there's vector controls for the residences in the area, you know, those are all very important things. But just as Councilmember Stip stated, this is, you know, part of our forever planning that we have to look at with water. So I really do appreciate that and look forward to continue partnerships with Liberty.
Anybody else? Councilman Loretano.
I want to thank Liberty also for this project because I think it's very important for the sustainability. We are in a desert and they've taken every effort to, I think Councilman Stip said it best, to really beautify this project. So it will be an asset, it will keep the industrial down for the homeowners, they won't have truck traffic going in and out. But when it comes right down to it, it's an issue about sustainability, about our 100-year water supply that will ensure growth and prosperity. We need water or we're not going to grow. So I think this is a great partnership and I think it'll be very helpful.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo.
There's not more, too much to add except to say again, the sustainability of water is key for our survival long-term. But what I really appreciate too is you taking the time to get out there and meet with all the stakeholders. And you receive feedback from those stakeholders. And as a result, you made some changes on the project, addressed, if I believe, some nettings for the birds, et cetera. So again, being proactive with that, coming give us briefing, I really appreciate that. So thanks.
Councilman Holman.
I really have nothing to add because it really, as Bill stated so eloquently, it's a no. I hit the wrong button. It is an environmental issue and it is important to us and I say go forward.
Councilman Campbell, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to working with Liberty and all of the other parties as we move forward to possibly doing something with the future park site and form a public partnership with them. And thank them very much for coming out to do this.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, and as a mayor, I appreciate all your comments. They're absolutely right on. Water is an issue, it's going to continue to be one of the biggest issues in Arizona. It's our gold. It's no longer yellow, it's very clear. And so we have to collaborate and cooperate. And if I told you before, it's at the center of conversation with all the mayors, especially the West Valley mayors. So let's go on. The next item. Okay, so roll call vote, please, and we'll go on to the next item.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Pass the 7-0.
All right, the next item on the business is a public hearing to consider a request and use permit at 2533 North Pebble Creek Parkway. Public meeting open. Chris Floden, Architectural Planner, will present. And now that you, do you want to do introductions? That's fine with me, I just didn't have it on the agenda. Please, I'm sorry.
We'll include that the next time. But this is Chris Floden, he's Architectural Planner. He will be doing the presentation on this this evening. Very good.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Derek. Good evening, Mayor Lord, council members. This is a use permit application to facilitate the use of an advanced auto on the southeast corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and Virginia. It's located at 2533 North Pebble Creek Road, or sorry, Pebble Creek Parkway. The new advanced auto will be designed and constructed in accordance with the Goodyear Design Guidelines. The application for use permit must demonstrate that the proposed use will not be detrimental to persons residing or working in within the area or the public welfare, and that it is reasonably compatible with the surrounding context. Staff has reviewed this request and finds that it meets these conditions for a use permit. On May 26, 2006, or sorry, May 22, 2006, the City of Goodyear City Council adopted Ordinance 2006-1006, rezoning approximately 1.64 acres of land located at the southeast corner of Virginia and Pebble Creek Parkway from PAD to commercial C2. The site, the subject parcel is depicted in the aerial, in the red section there. And the proposed, it's also surrounded by various uses, various parcels with various uses. To the north is the Goodyear Senior Living Center, which is a developed assisted living facility. To the northwest and northeast, we have Pebble Creek and Rio Paseo. To the east is the Goodyear Planned Regional Center, which is a multi-family, proposed multi-family development. To the south, we have Pebble Creek Plaza Shops. And to the west is Palm Valley Phase 8, an undeveloped commercial center. During the staff's preparation for this evening's presentation, we received a request from council to provide additional information and materials that accurately depict the proposed advanced auto and the surrounding context, the circulation between these sites, and building elevations along Pebble Creek Parkway. Mayor Lord and council members, per your request, we've assembled some images that accurately depict the surrounding context. This is a southeast bird's eye view looking to the southeast. We've overlaid that with the proposed advanced auto site. You can see the circulation that's from the Plaza Shops all the way up north to Virginia with the four entrances into the plaza off Pebble Creek. The second image is over, is a planned image, a site planned image overlaid with that same image of the advanced auto. And then also the Kentucky Fried Chicken drive-through restaurant, which is not constructed, and also an additional building at the Pebble Creek Plaza, which both are currently empty pads right now, vacant. The third image we have here are the proposed elevations for the Kentucky Fried Chicken, the Pebble Creek Plaza building that's not constructed, and then also the two buildings within Pebble Creek that are existing. The conceptual site plan and landscape plan, floor plan, and building elevations were submitted as part of the use permit application. This is the landscape plan for the advanced auto. The advanced auto is proposed to be just under 8,000 square feet in a single-story building and under 29 feet 4 inches in overall height. The basic configuration of the automotive facility is a showroom along Pebble Creek Parkway, four bays that open up to the south to pull cars in, and a storage facility for tires along Pebble Creek on that north side. Staff has worked with the applicant during the review of the use permit application, specifically with regards to the elevations. Staff had voiced some concerns with four-sided architecture and the building receiving consistent treatment. The specific concern staff had regards to the elevations along Pebble Creek Parkway and Virginia. The applicant agreed to add some additional articulation along these elevations. On the north elevation, we've added an additional window with a metal awning, some trellises that will be landscaped, and then also variation in roof height. The applicant also agreed to add two tower elements at the northeast and northwest of the building on the corners. We believe that that meets the material change and the mass articulation within the design guideline requirements. We did notify Phoenix Goodyear Airport and Luke Air Force Base. And given the location and the commercial nature and the proposed use of the advanced auto, neither the airport nor the base's operations will be adversely affected. In accordance with the citizen review process, a written notice was sent to all residents residing within 500 feet of the said property. Citizen review meeting was held on September 30. And no citizens appeared at this meeting and to date, no comments have been received. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the request at its regular scheduled meeting on October 15. And again, no comments or concerns were received from the public. During the meeting, several stipulations were revised and the commission voted 5 to 2 to forward recommendation to council for approval. In closing, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the approval of the with the subject stipulations of the request for use permit located at 2533 North Pebble Creek Parkway. The development of the parcel should be in strict conformance with the site plan and building elevations submitted on October 9. This concludes my presentation for the evening. I'm available for comment. And the applicant is also present with some additional materials and is available for comment.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody from the audience like to speak? I think Mr. Bull.
Mayor, members of the council, Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne, I would like to speak only if I need to speak before we get approved.
Okay. Well, then if you'll just stand by and be alert, well.
Very pleased with the recommendation and stipulations in front of you. If they work for you, they work for us.
Thank you.
I don't know what I did.
Yeah, somehow we went dark on our screens. There we go.
In all seriousness, Paul Kachir is here, as is his architect and one of the other guys from my office as well. We have boards, we have a PowerPoint, we have more stuff than you want that would go through the evolution of the site plan and the building. But I'm very proud of the way Paul has really stepped up on this site and worked with everyone in Goodyear on getting here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bull. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion, a second, please, to approve a request for a use permit in a C2 general commercial district for an automotive repair use, Advanced Auto Service and Tire Center at 2533 North Pebble Creek Parkway, located at the southeast corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and Virginia Avenue, adjacent to the Roosevelt Irrigation District Main Canal, subject to stipulations. Do I hear a motion, a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo, open for council discussion. Vice Mayor?
More of a general question for the owner. Or maybe Mr. Bull can answer. Oh, bring him up.
We'll see. Go ahead.
It's more about operations. Again, I appreciate you working with staff and coming up with some of these additional pieces on the actual building itself. So it blends in for what's there on Pebble Creek Parkway, I appreciate that. It's tires and service repair, is it specially tires, mostly service, 50/50? Just an overview of the business? Automotive too, I mean, do you do service on the building, I mean, on the cars as well? Okay, thank you. Just want to get a feel of the business itself. Again, welcome.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that, you know, I appreciated the thought that the Planning and Zoning Commission had put behind this because there were a couple that were concerned about the flow of the design guidelines and things like that. But I just would like to, you know, really step up for businesses and that there are corporate colors that, you know, this company goes by. And it's something that, as I believe we're in the minutes, they have 12 other, or 10 other? 14, 14 others. And so, you know, I appreciate that these are your colors. And there's really nothing significantly around it, per se, that would stop it from really not blending in. And you did take time to look at your landscaping. And it's not a vanilla box, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, let's go ahead and vote. So all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Did I hear you vote, Wally? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. All right, the next item on the business is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace Final Planned Area Development. I'm sorry.
I need to, is this the one I need to?
I'm sorry, open for public hearing.
Oh, never mind.
I'm sorry, there's a little disturbance up here on the dais, just one moment.
It's not the one I have to.
It's not the one I have to...
Okay, all right, okay. So we're open on the public hearing, and Joe Schmidt, Planning Manager, will present the next three items. So what we're going to do is 7.3, 7.4, and 7.5. So he's going to do the full presentation, and then on the other ones, he will not be making a presentation. We'll just be voting, okay? All right, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As you noted, there's three related items on the agenda tonight to the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace. There's an amendment to the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace Final PAD to revise the PAD Development Plan, the Design Criteria and Standards for the addition of a large grocery user, which is Winco Foods, and to change the name to Pebble Creek Marketplace. Second is a use permit for a single-tenant retail store, over 60,000 square feet for a proposed Winco Foods grocery store in the Pebble Creek Marketplace Commercial Center. And third is an amendment to the comprehensive sign package for the Pebble Creek Marketplace Commercial Center. As you can see in the aerial above, the property consists of 25 acres situated at the southwest corner of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway. The adjacent land uses you'll find consist of Cobblestone Creek Commercial Center to the north, and Palm Valley Phase Eight to the northwest. We have the Market at Estrella Falls Commercial Center to the northeast. Goodyear Center Point Commercial Center to the east across Pebble Creek Parkway. We have the I-10 freeway along the south boundary of the site. And to the west is vacant commercial land. The original PAD for the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace was approved in March 2007, and it had a development plan for one anchor, five junior anchors, five shops buildings, and two pads for a total of 242,000 square feet of commercial space. That development planned established an anchor in the southwest portion of the site, which is, was intended to be Arizona Tile. At the primary intersection of the corners of McDowell and Pebble Creek Parkway, it was anticipated there would be a bank structure with a drive-in facility, along with a corner plaza feature. Vehicular circulation from McDowell was provided by a main drive aisle fronted by shops, and then several east-west drive aisles providing access to separate parking pods. Access to Pebble Creek Parkway was at two locations along the east side of the property. The requested PAD amendment proposes to maintain the mix of commercial uses permitted within the existing PAD with a slight reduction in total square footage to 224,000 square feet. However, where the existing PAD proposed one major anchor and several junior anchors along in this area, now is proposing to replace the five junior anchors with one new anchor, which would be the Winco Food Store. As a result, there are several changes to the existing PAD that are required to accommodate the inclusion of the new anchor. First off, the change, there's a change in the name of the development from Pebble Creek Village Marketplace to Pebble Creek Marketplace. Second is revision to the development plan to replace the five junior anchors with a second anchor encompassing 85,000 square feet. Reconfiguration of the site layout to accommodate a larger parking field to serve the new anchor. Reconfiguration of the main drive aisle to add vehicle, additional vehicle lanes and turning lanes. Reconfiguration of the internal parking lot circulation. Placement of a convenience store, car wash, and proposed fuel station at the corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell Road for illustrative purposes. And revision to the PAD design guidelines to include the corporate building design materials and colors for the new anchor. It should be noted that while the proposed development plan includes several convenience uses, such as a convenience store, fuel station, and drive-through restaurant and car wash, these convenience uses are shown for illustrative purposes and still would come back for separate use permit during which they would be given a more detailed review. Use permit is required with this application since the Winco building is over 60,000 square feet. The city council, in reviewing a use permit, must determine that the proposed use meets the following two findings. First, that the use permit would not be material detrimental to persons residing or working in vicinity adjacent to the property, the neighborhood, or to the public welfare. And secondly, that the proposed use is reasonably compatible with uses permitted in the surrounding area. In support of this, the project proposes to use the existing driveways to access site, access the site from McDowell Road, as was planned originally, and the two on Pebble Creek Parkway. The master site plan shows adequate parking being provided for the, to accommodate a variety of commercial, retail, and office uses. The project has retained the entry feature at the corner of McDowell and Pebble Creek with trellises alongside of the project identification sign, although this, you might notice that the name didn't get changed on this slide, but it is on a subsequent slide. And the site will be enhanced with landscaping consistent with the city center gateway overlay zone. The PAD design guidelines for the center allow buildings, designs, and color palettes that are consistent with the corporate architecture for the anchors. This is a representation of what the Arizona Tile building was intended to look like. This is what the Winco Food Store proposed architecture. And the next series of slides show some of the other building pads throughout the building With respect to the comprehensive sign package, the revised plan is very similar to the one previously approved for Pebble Creek Village Marketplace. The new sign package reflects the name change for the commercial center from Pebble Creek Village to Pebble Creek Marketplace. This slide depicts the project identification sign that would be located at the corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell. And the wall signage throughout the project is unchanged except for the graphic showing the proposed signage for the new Winco Food Store. There's two multi-tenant pylon signs proposed along McDowell Road that would be about 20 feet in height, and one along the Pebble Creek Parkway. There's also two additional fuel pricing signs that are included in the design, or comprehensive sign package in the event that a fuel center is permitted at the northwest, east corner of the site. They also included a freeway pylon sign that had been previously approved with a height of 60 feet. Freeway pylon signs require their own use permit, and the one that was previously approved for this had expired, and a new application has not yet been filed, so it's our assumption that that will come back again at a later date. You can see from this graphic that the multi-tenant signs are styled similarly to the freeway pylon sign. Then the traffic directional signs we placed throughout the center will look like this. In conclusion, staff finds that the proposed PAD amendment will be consistent with the regional commercial land use designated for the subject property by the 2003 general plan and the business and commerce land use designation in the newly approved Goodyear 2025 plan, since we've been processing this as we've been going through the general plan adoption process. Staff likewise finds that the proposed use permit will not have any materially detrimental effects, and will be compatible with the surrounding area, and amendments to the comprehensive sign package are reasonable and appropriate. Should be noted that all the public notice requirements for this public hearing, as well as the other public hearings scheduled for tonight, have been met. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted its own public hearing on October 15th and unanimously voted seven to zero to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council on all three items. No one from the public spoke on the requests at that meeting, and no comments have been received by staff through the public notice process. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have. And also present is Gordon Keig with Cornwasser Development, who is representing the applicant on this project.
Great, thank you, Joe. I do have a speaker card here, a Gordon Krieg applicant would like to speak.
Good evening, Mayor Lord. For the record, my name is Gordon Keig with Cornwasser Shopping Center Properties, 2355 East Camelback Road in Phoenix. Thank you to Joe for a thorough presentation, and because he's hit all, most of my bullet points here, I will endeavor to be brief. The, as a reminder of what Joe said, this is a PAD, it's an amendment to the original PAD ordinance, it's not a new PAD, and it also includes this use permit and comprehensive sign plan. The amendment is driven by a commitment from Winco Foods to operate an 85,000 square-foot grocery store with a 24-hour operation. A couple of additional comments on the site plan. The major building orientation really is substantially similar to the originally approved PAD plan. The building's back up to the freeway, isolating the loading and service areas, portions of the property against the freeway and separating them from customer traffic. And most of the west half of the center is unchanged from the original PAD. With regards to access, and Joe did point out, the previously established access points from the original PAD application are utilized, we haven't changed those at all. There was considerable discussion with regards to the main drive aisle off of McDowell Road. We have an unusual circumstance on this property because there's a canal that affects access to McDowell Road, and there's really only one main access point into it. The design was, been designed and approved by a licensed traffic engineer, and we worked really closely with the staff to make sure everybody would be happy with that design. The landscaping plant palette was directly derived from the city gateway overlay district guidelines, so all of those, all of the plant material included in the PAD is quite nice. Because of those guidelines, I will point out that there's a plant in there called a Santa Barbara Daisy, and who could possibly object to a landscape palette that includes a plant called Santa Barbara Daisy, because I think that sounds really nice. With regards to the buildings, I would say this is not corporate architecture, this is a significantly enhanced building from what Winco typically builds around the west. It does include four-sided architecture, and that enhanced building design is very similar in comparison to a store that was recently opened in Gilbert, and stores under construction in Chandler and Surprise. All of those communities, as you know, have design guidelines similar to Goodyear. Setbacks, parking, landscaping, lighting, screen walls, all comply with Goodyear's design standards. We think it's a meritorious application in its content and design, and it's worthy of your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No more speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, well, we're going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read ordinance by title only?
Adopt Ordinance Number 14-1314, amending the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace Final Planned Area Development to revise the PAD Development Plan, Design Criteria, and Standards for the addition of a large grocery user, and to change the development name to Pebble Creek Marketplace on 25 acres located at the southwest corner of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion a second?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Stip, and a second by Councilman Laura Tano, open for council discussion. Councilman Stip?
I have no idea which one of these items this question falls under, so we're just going to shotgun them all, I guess. Joe, can we bring up the site map that was, we were just looking at?
Voila.
Yeah.
I didn't even do anything.
Look at you. The, I've got actually two comments on this. Number one, I am absolutely thankful that we do not have a whole bunch of little pads tucked in this giant parking lot, so thank you for that. But my other observation with this is the traffic flow. We moved for the second and the northernmost entrance on the east side. So if you look at this map off of Pebble Creek Parkway where it says ag zoning right there, that entrance, that entrance dead-ends when we come in. If someone is trying to get all the way to the western, northwestern corner, we're going to have cut-through traffic through the parking spaces without, we've got, without anything hard in there. I realize that theoretical design is to send them around, both right or left, but I think we all know that human nature is we take the shortest path from point A to point B. I'm really concerned about the traffic flow, especially with, you know, if you're coming south on Pebble Creek Parkway, you're not going to turn, you're not going to turn right to turn left, people are going to turn into these, into these driveways, and I'm just afraid of the mess that we're going to create in that parking lot.
You know, it's very similar to the, if I may just interject this, to when you come off on, is it McDowell, or is it Dyserd? Off on Dyserd, on the Avondale side, where Fries is, you know, across from Coles, it's exactly like this. If you, when you come off of I-10, so you come off, you got I-10 coming off, and the entries are very much similar to this. And I go into it frequently at one store, I go in there, and I'm always amazed that it isn't what you're saying. So this could end up being that, but, I mean, it is always quite congested coming off a highway, going into that shopping center, so...
Well, you're not coming off the highway on this, that's my...
I know, but I'm saying there's more traffic coming off in that area off of I-10 into this, into their shopping center, so, and it works. I mean, I agree that it's in and out. It's not easy.
Right.
You know, it's not perfect, but...
The converse of this is the same shopping center where the Costco is is an absolute mess.
Where the what is?
Where Costco is at 99th and McDowell, and the traffic that is shooting through lanes, et cetera. I just, I have a real concern about us basically dead-ending an entrance. That's essentially what we're doing without providing adequate east-west traffic. We had it in the first one. The first one, there were two east-west traffic lanes, and now with this design, we've gone, we've eliminated one of the east-west, and we've pushed it all through there, and then we've made this very peculiar right turn, left turn, which is right, and I hate to keep bringing up stores in another city, but that's the Avondale design right there in front of the Sam's Club. And it's a very difficult turn, and that is the entrance to the Winco. Lot of foot traffic.
Do you have the designer engineer here? We know, or what, because I remember when this first was talking about this, what we were worried about, if I'm remembering correctly on this particular project, was the truck traffic coming in for Winco and being able to unload. Was that some of the concern? Somebody want to address that? So does any of that have to do with this?
Mayor Lord, first staff worked long and hard with the applicant to get the parking laid out. It may not be the best in some ways, but it meets Winco's needs, and that was important to them. And there wasn't... And, you know, the flow is very tight in the site. Actually, I would like to give Mr. Keig the opportunity, he might be able to explain Winco's rationale a little bit more about the design of the site and how it works for them.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Derek. As I said during my presentation, the site is restricted from an access standpoint because of only one access, only one major access point on McDowell Road. A property of this size typically would have at least three access points on McDowell Road to relieve and give traffic alternate routes to reduce congestion. What is important to Winco, and important to most large-format retailers, is a, is a field of parking that is uninterrupted, where people do not have to cross major traffic lanes in order to get from the store to their vehicle. Obviously, there's always a main drive at the immediate front of the building, but... Obviously, there's always a main drive at the immediate front of the building, but, yeah, it's pretty critical, and, you know, there's a, you know, almost a hybrid design here because of that restricted access point on McDowell Road, but they would prefer to have very long parking rows, because that's, you know, number one, it's more efficient, it's a more efficient use of land, and it's, it's a, it's a design that is generally more appealing to their customer base. So with regards to the access off of McDowell, that, that north drive, or excuse me, off of Pebble Creek Parkway, the, that north drive is a left-in-only, there's no left-turn-out, so there's only three of the typical vehicular movements into a main drive, so there's less congestion in that drive to begin with. And there is a landscape barrier that prevents people from driving directly through that access point through the middle of the parking lot. There is a barrier, for, for lack of a better term, with the curb and a landscape island, so it does push the traffic either north or south, and it's not a small little island, and if we, if Councilman Stip would prefer to have that enhanced, that landscape island be lengthened a little bit to really relieve that, that through traffic, we could probably take a look at that. Putting a driveway all the way through that would be a pretty costly reduction in the number of parking stalls, which is really, really critical to them.
And that's certainly not what I'm suggesting, but if, if you're, and obviously I'm one voice, but if we could, if that gets extended even a little bit, you know, I'm looking at this saying, I'm the, if I'm the lazy driver, I'm pulling in, I'm driving three spaces, and I'm hanging a quick left, and I'm cutting through the parking lot because I want to get to what's on the other side. If we can dissuade that, even three or four stalls wide, now I've got a whole different session. I'm just...
I think you're saying elongate that landscape median to add, include maybe three or four more parking stalls to...
It may be less attractive for someone to make the cut-up. We're never going to eliminate it, and I, I'm not trying to do that, but I'm also trying not to necessarily encourage it, and I think that short thing kind of does that.
Very good point, and I think we could, if you wanted to so stipulate, if we wanted to extend that by three or four stalls, just to make that a little bit more difficult for that lazy driver. No one would ever suggest that you're lazy, I would just say you're, you're in a hurry, but...
I'm with you on that, I'm okay with lazy.
But, yeah, we could, we could live with a stipulation like that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
While you're up there, just a question on how this is laid out. When Winco builds the shop, what's looking here drawing-wise, what's going to be actually built? Are there going to be some pads? Is there going to be dirt? Can you kind of walk me through, is all of the parking going to be in? Are the pads going to be in besides Winco? Is it going to have dirt? Can you...
Absolutely. There, there is a phasing plan in the, in the PAD, so this first phase would include the Winco building, that, that east-west shop building that backs up to McDowell Road would be included in the first phase.
Okay.
All of the perimeter landscaping along McDowell and along Pebble Creek Parkway, and then the three building, the three pad buildings to the east of the Winco, along Pebble Creek, would have to come in at a later date for their design review as well. And those would, would be at a, at a next phase, and then the, the western half of the property would be a future phase also.
So most of the parking, or half that parking? Can you...
I have a phasing plan here, if I could hand it to you and...
I'm just curious of picture, I'm trying to, I'm trying to...
Most of the parking in front of the Winco.
Just give it to Mr. Schmitt, he'll pull it up on there.
I'm just trying to visualize what part of this entire parcel, what's going to look like initially in the first phase.
Can somebody help up here, please?
Can we have Elmo?
Christian went out there, so let's see if he can take care of that.
meetings. Yeah.
That's it, just show it to him, that's it.
It's going old school, yeah, but the people in the audience can't. Everybody.
Okay, no private, just get on with this.
Okay.
Bill, did you, because you got your question, is it, does it answer?
Yeah, it answers, it answers.
Okay. Roy, while he's doing that, I have a question for you. I'm not sure the other council people are in agreement with Councilman Stip, so do we need an amendment, and then we vote on that? So how are we going to do this?
Amendment to Stip.
Or is it because it's a... I'm sorry, can't read it. Okay, so administrative, it can be done, all right.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check here. And so while they're doing that, before, while they're doing that, I'm asking council the question. Stip made a suggestion to eliminate...
To just expand...
Expand the driveway, the entrance.
Entrance, the landscape buffer at that eastern entrance to make it about four spaces wide.
Four spaces deeper.
At the discretion of the development team.
Okay. Just shake your head, yes?
It's okay with the developer.
He said that, okay? All right, okay, then they'll do it administratively.
Thank you.
Okay. So should I go ahead? Do we need, we're fine to go ahead, because...
What?
Well, and the voting, the voting on, voting on it?
I have...
Oh, all right. Why don't you, why don't you take a question out? Council, do you need something on the screen?
Well, I don't know where we are technology-wise. We're looking at all three of these pieces together, I know, and I, I bring up in the sign package book, it shows elevations of Winco, and it shows elevations of Arizona Tile, correct? Is Arizona Tile still, and I'm assuming that this is current, so Arizona Tile eventually will be coming at some point.
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Osborne, it is, that's my understanding at this point.
Okay. So looking at the elevations of Arizona Tile, they're very nice. There's, there's texture differences, there's depth and dimension to the building. Now, comparing it to Winco, can you help me with, because these are both large buildings, so how do they fit together? What, what are the elements in the buildings that help them fit together? Because by looking at just these pictures, one doesn't see much orchestrated effort there, so can you help me with a little bit of that?
Well, Mayor Lord, Councilmember Osborne, if you recall from the original PAD, the Arizona Tile building was kind of separate and distinct from the balance of the site, and so what's being proposed here is kind of architecture that's separate and distinct from the rest of the site for the, for the other major anchor.
Are they not right next to each other?
Yes, they are.
So if we were to compare the pictures together, can you, can you point out pieces that make them want to go together? Because I like the Arizona Tile building, and I'm not so sure I like the Winco building, and so, and then if I go a mile down the road and I look at what we made Walmart adhere to, this is different, and so that's why I'd like a little help as to why I like this building. So help me, help you help me, to make it cohesive, because that's a big building, and if it was to, I think, exit strategy, long range for our city, that's a big building that doesn't have many windows, doesn't have a lot of different elevations, and so how does this all go together for the center?
Well, Mayor Lord and Councilmember Osborne, I, I guess what I'm saying is that they, they don't necessarily go together, that they're unique in their, their designs, whereas the balance of the center has a kind of an architectural theme to it, and given to, to believe that with revisions to the design guidelines, we wanted to encourage more uniqueness, more distinction, rather than all uniformity. So we did raise some issues during the conceptual review that further design review would be required to meet all the design guidelines as we go through a more formal site planning process, but I do think that this is probably representative of what the intent is in the design of this building.
I thought I found a landscape diagram in here, and now I can't, so maybe it wasn't with this. Is there a landscape design that I saw within here, or maybe I saw it on something else?
No, there is a landscape design. If we could have the presentation back, I think I have a copy of that. That's the master landscape plan. So at least along the sides of the building, there'll be additional landscaping to help break up some of the massing.
A little difficult to see, I see where she's having problems here, but if you can see along McDowell, along Pebble Creek Parkway, and of course...
And I, and I'm very appreciative of Winco using Goodyear, I really am, and it's, it's just what we have set in the past of, even with Walmarts, of saying, there are standards, and there's design and a look that we want our city to be, those are, you know, those are the things that I'm looking at, and I, I'm curious, because I guess most grocery stores don't have a lot of windows, but you don't have a lot of windows. Is there, is there a reason to that? Is that because that's what grocery stores do? You know, I, I don't want to say no to your project, but I'm trying to, you got to pitch it to me a little bit, I guess, is, is my, my thing, and...
Why don't you put the design back up on the screen? Can you do that, Joe? Put the pictures of the...
Councilman Osborne and Mayor Lord, the, as I said earlier, the... As I said earlier, is a significantly enhanced design from what Winco typically builds in...
I apologize, I've never seen your, I've never seen a Winco, so I don't know what to judge by.
And they have four stores open in the metro Phoenix area, excuse me, five, a fifth store just opened in, in Gilbert a couple of weeks ago.
Maybe if you can just tell us some of the elements, so I'm looking at the brown, is that brick?
There is, there is both smooth and split-face CMU on, on the building, there is a...
CMU for the public is what?
Concrete masonry, it's a block.
Thank you.
Yeah, so split-face block and smooth block, painted and integral to that design theme. There is a stucco system on the, kind of behind the Winco sign, and sort of the, the almost white color, that one banding to the right of the Winco sign is a, is a efa stucco, the striping along the front of the store underneath the Winco and Winco sign, and the striping that goes all the way along that standing seam metal roof to the left of the Winco sign, so there's decorative steel elements that are along the right-hand side of the building. Those are C-channel metal awnings that are applied directly to the building that provide shade for the pedestrian areas in, in, in front of the, in front of the sidewalk, in front of the store. There're standing seam metal roofs, there're steel trellises and awnings, all of those are part of the approved materials of the original PAD application. Generally, there's not windows in grocery stores because the perimeter of the buildings are merchandised, so you have a, if you have a window, typically you're, you are, you know, for most conventionally laid-out grocery stores, there's not windows because you'd be looking at the back of a, of a display case. They do, you know, they, you know, for, it's not apparent on the elevation, but they do daylight harvest through skylights, so to, to allow natural light into the building. I mean, that's something that's, keeps the building efficient and does allow for natural light inside the store. There's variations in building height, there's variations in the plane along the front and sides of the building that are all enhanced from, again, what they typically, what they typically build.
So it looks like we have about two or three different colors in, in dimension?
I believe there are four different colors on the Winco building, the, the Wayne's Coat color, the, above it, the standing seam metal, metal roof is another color, the columns are a different color, the cornices are a different color, so that's five, five different colors. Once you get beyond that, that's, gets a little busy.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, and we want you to be here for a very, very long time, and so I just want to feel good about it, and I, and I thank you for addressing this, and...
Pleasure's mine.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Because of all the questions, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please. Okay?
Oh, Mayor?
I'm assuming council discussion is not, Wally, I'm sorry, I, speak up.
That's okay. I just wanted to let Winco know that I have been to their store on West Bell Road, and it looks nice. I'm not nuts about the brown color, but you know, that's part of Goodyear's palette, so I think it will look just fine once they get landscaping in, and it'll really be a great addition to that corner.
Thank you, and thank you for reminding me you're there, Wally. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Homan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item business is amendment to comprehensive sign package for Pebble Creek Village Marketplace.
Mayor, do you need to do 7.4?
Oh, I missed 7.4, sorry about that. All right, next item on business is a public hearing to consider the use permit for a single-tenant retail store. Okay, over 60,000 square feet proposed in the Pebble Creek Marketplace. Open public meeting. You, we didn't already do this?
No, you have to do each item separately and vote on them.
And so I, and we just did on...
7.3.
We just did 7.3?
Correct.
All right, I'm sorry about that. Joe, see, you shouldn't come up so many times, you confuse the mayor. Okay, Joe Schmidt, to present?
Yes, Mayor, this was part of the original presentation. The use permit is required because the building is over 60,000 square feet in the city center gateway overlay district. I would like to point out that at 85,000 square feet, if this building had been located elsewhere in the city, it would not be subject to the, to the large retail user, which is set at 100,000 square feet, so I just thought I'd add that for your information, so...
Thank you.
If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise I have no further presentation.
Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, so no speaker cards, closed meeting. Can I have a motion a second to approve the use permit? Can I have a motion a second to approve the use permit for a single-tenant retail store, Winko Foods, over 60,000 square feet, proposed in the Pebble Creek Marketplace Commercial Center located the southwest corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell Road within the city center gateway overlay district, subject to stipulation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Holman and a second by Councilman Stip. Any more conversation? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So I'm back on, we're at 7.5. Thank you. Is an amendment to comprehensive sign package of Pebble Creek Marketplace. Joe has already given the presentation on this. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience like to speak? Can I please have a motion a second to approve an amendment of the comprehensive sign package for the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace? Now rename Pebble Creek Market, Pebble Creek Marketplace, located on 25 acres at the southwest corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell Road, Zone Plan Area Development under the Pebble Creek Marketplace Final Ped, subject to stipulations. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilman Lortano, a second by Councilman Holman, open for council discussion. No discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Let's go on to 7.6. Is to consider approving a second amendment to the development agreement with West Core slash Goodyear LLC for reimbursement of certain public infrastructures. Brian Dahlke, city manager, to present.
Just a moment, Mayor. I do need to recuse myself due to agreements with Mace Rich and my company.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here tonight to talk about the second amendment to the West Core Development Agreement for your consideration. This is actually the second of two parts. The first action that we did was back on October 27th, and council did approve the notice of intent to, for us to enter into this agreement, and that development agreement has been on file since then. So state law requires two actions. That one was already done, and the action tonight is for your consideration to actually approve the amendment itself. So with that, I do want to acknowledge that there are several folks in the audience. Mace Rich is represented here tonight. I noticed George Getz, who is also the land partner with Mace Rich, and of course, city staff has worked on this as well. And we have two additional folks that have helped the city in the evaluation of this, and one of those is Mark Winkleman, who is real estate and retail expert in the greater Phoenix area, and also Sarah Merly, who is with Applied Economics. She, by state law, we have to do an economic impact analysis of this, which she did, and we'll actually have that covered in a slide tonight. So back in 2006, we actually did agree to the first development agreement with Mace Rich. And that, under the conditions of that agreement, they were to complete what we call the Phase One, or excuse me, the initial implementation, defined as a minimum retail improvements by December of 2012. And just to make sure that that's understood, that's two anchors. Now, an anchor can be a theater, and it can be a department store. It could be two department stores, it could be combinations, obviously. But the minimum requirements were two anchors, as well as 300,000 square feet of inline retail shops that would go with that. The agreement also defined timelines for the, as I stated earlier, and that was to be done with those initial improvements by December 2012. I think it's very important to point out, and I want to spend just a little bit of time on this, what you have in front of you, and also for the audience, is there's a map up there that actually shows the area that was within the improvement district. Now, an improvement district, what that is, is it's bonds that were sold to actually pay back for the infrastructure for this. And the area that's outlined in the black, all the areas within that were part of the improvement district to the construction of this project. You can tell there's a lot of money that was put into that, and that included about $47 million worth of improvements at that time. Now, that included, there's a substantial amount of that that was actually public improvements. We ended up getting Bullard Wash Park out of it. You notice that the bridgeways that were put in there on McDowell Road, Mountain Vista, those were installed as part of this. And for some of us that go back a little ways, we absolutely remember the old days when McDowell Road was a two-lane roadway, and it got flooded, you know, as Bullard Wash cut across there. So substantial improvements have occurred on Bullard Avenue, on McDowell Road, and Pebble Creek Parkway in the areas within these boundaries. And those were improvements that the city, a lot of those would have had to have done on our nickel back at some point. So we did receive a lot of public benefit from all these improvements, $47 million worth. I think it's important to point out that Mace Rich has been making the assessment payments annually. It's about $3.3, $3.5 million. To date, they paid about $20 million in improvement district payments for this public infrastructure. So in essence, what the development agreement, the big provision of this was to reimburse Mace Rich for the public improvements, and that is a 50% reimbursement for those areas pretty much defined within the black boundaries here. And that is 50% of the sales tax revenues that are collected within this area. 50% of that goes back to Mace Rich to reimburse them for the assessment payments that they're making for public infrastructure. So if you really put it simplistically, it is a performance-based reimbursement to Mace Rich for paying back public infrastructure. And that's a primary portion of what this agreement is, this portion of it. So the amendments. One of the things that happened, and we have worked closely with West Core and Mace Rich for a number of years, and I can tell you, they are committed to the mall. Yes, we have been frustrated. Yes, they have been frustrated. This has not happened as quickly as we had hoped. We had talked about, you know, it opening by 2012. And one of the things that is, we hit the Great Recession, it became abundantly clear that they were not going to make that 2012 mark. So we did a first amendment. And that first amendment, we did it in December of 2009. It extended the deadlines to do their minimum retail requirements. Again, two anchors, 300,000 square feet of inline retail shops. So that first amendment allowed Mace Rich to then extend the timeframe for those improvements to December 2014, if they were to make a prepayment of permit fees, which is about $1.33 million. And they have done that. So that payment was done, that extended it from 2012, December, to now December of 2014. They know that they're not going to make 2014. So the next provision in this first amendment actually allowed them to make a second payment, prepaid development fees, development impact fees of $1.25 million. They intend to make that this December. And so, in essence, they are still under the original agreement that as long as they were to build by 2016. Well, they know that, and we know, and in working with Mark Winkleman, who's our expert, if you will, that is a challenge. It really comes down to the anchors wanting to be prepared to go forward with that. And the anchors are, it's not an if, it's a when with them, and they're not committed to the 2016 timeframe. So what happens is, and now we're entering into this second agreement, which I'll go through in a little bit more detail. Let me back up one. I think I just got into Garrett's presentation. I'll bring him up in a minute. Yeah, at this point, let me go ahead and bring Garrett Newland up for, he is with Mace Rich Corporation. There are a few slides that he'll go through, and then I'll come back up here and go through the balance of the detail on what the amendment is, this next amendment. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Happy to be here before you again tonight. Want to give some background on Mace Rich tonight. Got several things I want to walk through. Where I want to start, though, I think, is I wanted to outline what this Estrella Falls project is for the community, how we see it moving forward, and really draw some parallels to some other projects that you may be aware of, that the company's built here in the Phoenix area over the last 40-plus years. Want to start out with, at the time that Mace Rich and West Core at the time got involved with this property, the regional mall was actually scheduled to be a couple of miles further to the east. We got together with George Getz, with the Globe Corporation, who's here tonight, he's our partner on this deal, and agreed to move the mall site over to Pebble Creek, over to Bullard, along McDowell Road. With all of the freeway improvements, where the 303 was coming in, and spacing to other regional projects, this was the best ideal location, not just for Goodyear, but for the entire southwest valley. We have over 3 million square feet of commercial planned for the area that's outlined here. But I will tell you, it is a long-term build-out. And again, I mentioned some other projects. Paradise Valley Mall area in Phoenix, you've got the regional mall in the center, and you've got all that commercial around it. Chandler, Chandler Fashion Center. You've got the regional mall, just over a million square feet, and then you've got about 2 million square feet of other commercial all the way around it. Santan Village in Gilbert, the most recent ground-up project that we built, it's the same thing. We've got a regional mall, and then a lot of commercial, office, hotel, and other retail that's building up around it. These projects are long-term. A couple of examples. One would be Chandler. Chandler, West Core approached the Propster family, who owned property along the future 101, 202 freeway alignments, originally in 1986. Well, the regional mall didn't open until 2001, and now, some 13, 14 years later, that was about a 350-acre master plan. The last two commercial parcels are just now coming into development with Heinz. So I want to make sure that we're, you know, trying to manage expectations, that that property, that project fits not just what Chandler needs, but that entire part of the valley, that's the same vision that we have here, and the same level of investments that we put in to date to allow us to make that happen over time. Again, the way this lays out, the regional mall along Bullard Avenue and McDowell, we've already built the market at Estrella Falls, initial phase of the power center at Pebble Creek and McDowell. All of the improvements that Brian walked through allowed our market at Estrella Falls to be built. It also allowed all the other commercial development that has already occurred along McDowell Road and along Pebble Creek Road in this area to occur. So we feel very proud of that, that we were able to help the community move forward, and really seed the area from an infrastructure perspective, so that we can move forward with major projects. Let's see if I can move forward without messing this up. No. Quickly, Mace Rich, large company headquartered in Santa Monica, more than 50 properties, 50 million square feet all over the country, owned West Core since 2002. We own Scottsdale Fashion Square, Chandler Fashion Center, Santan Village, Kirland, Arrowhead, and Superstition Springs, all of which are major super-regional destinations that serve not only their individual community, but a larger trade area around them. So that 330-acre commercial core that I outlined on the map, made up of those components, there will be several retail power center developments, regional mall development, and then other commercial property, office, hotel, et cetera, that'll be built over time. Little bit about the market and timing. Regional-scale projects like this have always been challenging. I will tell you that with the world changing the way it has in the last 10 years, it's even more challenging than it was. The rise of the internet, you know, there are three basic delivery methods now that most retailers have. They have full-price stores that are still by far the largest percentage of their sales, most of them. You've got discount and outlet opportunities that have taken a larger share of that, and you've got the internet. Now, the total internet sales portion of retail is still only less than 10%, but it's growing every year. It will continue to be a significant driver. 10 years ago, you had a handful of ground-up, full-scale regional malls that were opening pretty much every year in growing communities all across the country. That has changed dramatically. After the Great Recession, there have only been a couple of regional malls that have opened. There are only a handful that are really on deck over the next, say, five to seven years. The issue that we have today here is that sales in Arizona have not quite caught up to locations elsewhere around the country, particularly for some of our department store partners. They are seeing sales in other places already back to pre-2006, 2007 levels, and then going beyond. We had a nice recovery, initial recovery, just like our housing market did, and then things have kind of plateaued. And that's okay. We were optimistic and positive about things going forward, but they just haven't rebounded as quickly as we would have liked. Retailers drive these regional mall projects. All we can do as the developer is create the opportunity. We create the location, we start talking to the retailers about the timing that we see, but they have to agree, they have to sign on, they have to sign leases, and come to the table with their investment all at the same time, or we've got no project. The number of anchors today significantly less than 10 years ago. When West Core was working on Chandler Fashion Center, there were eight or nine department stores to choose from. Four slots got picked, plus the theater. When we built Santan Village, we were down to probably three or four department stores. Now, we're probably at two or three that will go in, you know, most communities around the country. So it's a very limited universe of those anchors, and even though there are only a few of those, the shop retailers, the fashion retailers, they still want those large department stores to be part of the project. They drive a lot of traffic, they do a lot of national advertising that then the smaller retailers benefit from. So it's still a very key component. Want to talk just briefly about communication on timing. I know that's been a sore point for, it's been a sore point for a lot of people. It's created a lot of disappointment, both among the council, in my company, in the community at large. We do our best to try to pick a date that's two to three years out, when we have to start our final site plan and design, and then start to build the project, because it takes about 20 months to build this thing. So we're in constant contact with our anchors and major retailers that have to be a part of the project, and when we feel like we've got them all lined up and ready to go, we'll announce timing. Well, about a year and a half ago, at an industry trade event, we had a speaker that announced timing for the project, that turned out to not be the case. One of our department store partners in particular said they were ready to go, and then said, "Well, but I require that other department store to be ready to go, too." So again, all I can do is apologize for my company, and let you know that we're as disappointed as you when it comes to trying to select the perfect date, get everyone lined up and ready to go, and make that huge investment commitment. Remember, when we move forward with one of these projects, we're going to invest probably in the neighborhood of $200 million. Our partners, all the retailers, are also investing significantly in their fit-up of their store and merchandising the store. So it's a significant commitment, and all that has to come together at the same time. So... So... Also wanted to talk briefly about partnerships. We've been a great partner in the community for over forty years. We're always very involved with the schools. We've been, I think, a great partner with the city of Goodyear, sponsoring spring training. We've been a major sponsor every year since the ballpark opened. We're proud to do that, happy to do that. Again, we're involved with local school districts, we do events with the city, and we're committed to continuing to do that into the future. Now, let's talk a little bit about investment. We've invested over $50 million to date in, just in the regional mall project. Completely set aside the power center that we've already opened so far. That's separate dollars expended, significant, but separate. This is just to bring forward a regional mall, and then all of the other benefit that will come along, and development that will come along with that. Includes investment in the improvement district, making Bullard Wash a community amenity, and not just a drainage canal. Again, we're proud and happy to do that, and create other infrastructure that has allowed the commercial that has occurred to occur up to this date. We worked with the city to issue bonds. You know, these large regional projects typically happen a number of different ways. Either the developer will fund directly, and then get sales tax reimbursements directly, we've done that in the past. The town of Gilbert actually floated municipal bonds and built all of the infrastructure around Santan Village. In this case, we thought, and it worked well for the city, too, to use the improvement district vehicle, which kept the city from having to pay anything, putting the bondholders to put the funds up, and then assessments placed on the property. So we've been paying, and as Brian mentioned, significant dollars up to date in the improvement district, and our full schedule still to come, and we're committed to doing that if we can move forward with this amendment tonight. So what we would like to do, what we'd like to propose, we believe we have an opportunity to bring Goodyear a state-of-the-art theater. I'll try not to mention any names, although we've already done that, and that's okay. It will be a great project for the city, and it will be a great first phase for us to kick off and really plant the flag for the regional mall development to come. We'll be investing millions of dollars, in addition to what we've already expended, to deliver the theater today, and get the development agreement hopefully extended, to give us an opportunity tomorrow, hopefully within the next couple of years. And again, we're asking for an extension to 2021, but no one wants to build this and start recouping investment more than we do. We are absolutely committed to that. The second phase, then, would be the regional mall itself, additional anchors, additional shop and restaurant square footage that would come online, and then beyond that is the demand that the regional mall creates for the other millions of square feet of additional development, like we've done in Gilbert and Chandler, and Glendale, Arrowhead, and a lot of other great projects, not just in Arizona, but all over the country. So... In conclusion, I appreciate the mayor and council for their consideration for this, and I look forward to bringing a great new theater to town, and hopefully continue to work with you all. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and council, finish your presentation. Certainly, Mr. Newland would be open for questions, as would some of our experts in the audience, as well as the city. So just to finish up, here's what we're looking at. At a high level, we're looking for really two phases to what we call the initial, or the minimum retail improvements, and that is a Phase One, that's already been talked about. Per the agreement we have in there, that the theater will not be less than twelve screens. In addition, there's two pad sites, and these are right up against McDowell Road, so the theater itself is pushed up fairly close to McDowell Road as well, so they're trying to focus the onsite infrastructure in one general area. So that is their commitment to this. The Phase Two portion, as Mr. Newland pointed out, that is, first, before that even kicks in, they have to meet that first criteria, and that's building the theater, as well as two pad sites, no later than December 31, 2016. If they meet that, then the next provision kicks in, which is Phase Two, to build out the regional mall itself. So in exchange, they would have an ability to construct the rest of the minimum retail improvements by December 31, or before, to actually be open for business by December 31, 2021. I wanted to point out, because the rest of the agreement really remains intact, and that goes back to the 2006 agreement. So at Mace Rich's option, they have an opportunity to pay for staff, city staff, to actually be devoted and dedicated solely to their project. That's still intact in the original agreement. That could be planning and inspection staff, and whenever you pull together a hundred-plus stores at any given time, there are a lot of tenant improvements going on, so you need a lot of inspectors and onsite staff for that. In addition, they still have a commitment, a requirement, to pay $600,000 over a three-year period for enhanced police services. What this does is this essentially gives us an opportunity to kind of ramp up our police force. We know that there will be additional calls for service, et cetera, so that was part of the agreement. We also want to make sure that there's an ability to connect with emergency radios, and certainly police radios, so they'll have repeaters and things like that. And I'm not the technology guy on radios, but we need to make sure that we have coverage, no dead spots throughout the entire mall area. That is a requirement, to make sure that that does not happen. We'll have a police substation there that they are required to construct for us, a community room, and that's one where it can be used by the community. Obviously, it has to be scheduled, but there is going to be a community room built as part of this mall project, and a city information kiosk of different events going on. And probably, not to be overlooked at all, is they'll continue to make the improvement district payments. The city has not made those payments. Again, that has been Mace Rich for all these years. So by state law, we are required to have an economic impact analysis. This was done by Applied Economics, Sarah Merly is here in the audience if there are questions on this, and her firm actually did all the analyses along the way. So the first one done in 2006, when we did the original agreement, and when we did the amendment, we had to have another one that was done. And then finally, we're looking, we had this last one done for this Second Amendment. And what it has to do, it has to determine, and you'll see on here, the bullets on here, they'll start with the last bullet first. It's a validation that the development of the full project would not have occurred, same time or location, without the public infrastructure reimbursements. So that's been met. We also have to make sure that we cover our reimbursement obligations, but the point I want to end here on this slide is the city, during the, once the mall is built, we will be receiving just the city's portion of that, nine to 10 million dollars a year. When you put that in perspective, we're about $36 million a year in sales tax revenues for the city today. You add another 10 million on top of that, it's another 27%, and probably our finance director's smiling over that number. But it is, the point is, it's significant for the community, for the city, to be able to use those resources for other needs within the community. So it is management's recommendation. We have looked at this, we have worked internally, we've worked externally, and it is management's recommendation to council that you do adopt this resolution to the Second Amendment to the development agreement. With that, mayor and council, we can answer questions.
Thank you very much. I see we have a number of speaker cards, so before I call them, just to give you some direction, each speaker is limited to three minutes. The yellow light and the buzzer will let you know that you have 30 seconds left to speak. Before you begin to speak, please identify yourself by clearly stating for record your name and your address. So let's start out, please, with Molly Casperick. And Molly, I hope I said your name correctly. Casperick.
Good evening, mayor, council members, gentlemen. I had my speech all ready to go, but jeez, you've enlightened me, I've got to start all over here. First of all, one of the concerns that we have is that, as a citizen, I don't think that we were offered a lot of alternatives on this. It's just like, here it is, take it or leave it, kind of thing. The mall, the impression of the design of the mall that I get is that it's going to be the typical 20th-century mall, and not something forward-looking, like the 21st century. I'm kind of familiar with the Santan area, Kirland Commons is my favorite place. Are we looking at that, or are we looking at one big clump like the Cardinal Stadium? Can you answer that question? I mean, what is it going to be?
Do you want to finish all your questions first, and then have...
If they want to take notes, that's fine. We're looking for more of like a downtown kind of concept, where you can, like Kirland Commons, you can drive in, there are shops, trees, places to eat. We want different stores. We don't want Dillard's and Macy's, and all the teeny-bopper stores that are typically in the malls. You know, we want something fresh. The other thing is, if you do the type of development where you don't have the big anchors at each end, and it's all enclosed, you can begin to develop piecemeal, one section at a time. You don't have to do the whole thing in one big project. I'm familiar with the development up at Northern. The theater was in there first, I believe. Those shops have struggled. The theater is not the selling point for the development, as far as I can see in that particular situation. This mall is going to be in an area where there is a senior community. I don't know if you're familiar with this, but seniors like to eat out, and we like to eat out in groups, we like community rooms, and none of the restaurants that are here provide any of that. So, you know, when you start developing more restaurants, we'd like you to find people that are willing to do that. I think that's it. We just, we want a fresh look, we don't want to wait until 2021, but it sounds like we're going to have to hope that we live long enough to 2021 to see something, but I think if you do it piecemeal, you can get it here quicker. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to give you the choice, if you'd like to address anything after she spoke or not. I can do that? Is that... Okay. Counsel, how do you feel about that? You think, because there were so many things in there, I want to make sure that, in fairness to Garrett, too, but in fairness to us, okay. So, you're on.
Okay, mayor, council. Just to respond to a couple of the questions, concepts that were raised there. As far as the format goes, if I committed to something today, it would probably be wrong. And staff knows, and I think even council knows, that, you know, we have to respond to what our retailers want. And, you know, there were a lot of enclosed regional malls that got built from the '50s up through the 2000s, and then there was a big change, and we went to more of the outdoor lifestyle format. Santan Village was built that way, Kirland Commons was built that way. Those are two great examples of the outdoor format, lifestyle format, working very well. Other projects, and I won't name any developers or locations, that did those outdoor formats without the anchors, have not fared as well in this economy, in Arizona and in other places. So we will deliver the format that the retailers that want to be here, based on Goodyear and the southwest valley's great demographics, and whether we do it in an enclosed mall, or a lifestyle format, or some other format that we don't even know what it is yet today, I know that the city will be proud of it, and it will drive sales, and will bring shoppers in, which is, I think, what the council wants, and of course, that's what we want, too. As far as the comment about phase development, absolutely agree with that, and that's what we're proposing to do tonight, is bring a theater first, and then bring more of the rest of the project along after. Very cognizant of the retirement population in the close proximity to our project, and the offerings retailers that will come will absolutely serve that. Sit-down restaurants are a big part of any of the projects we've built around the valley. And again, we're committing to build a community room that would be open for community groups to use at different times, that would be at our cost and expense. We've done that in other malls, like in Chandler, and it's been received very well, and it's used a lot as a great community amenity, and we're committed to doing that here as well. So I hope that answered most of those.
Thank you. Just take a seat, I'm sure there'll be some other questions. John Cavalo?
My name is John Cavalo, I live at 3081 159th Drive in Pebble Creek. My question is, projections are very rosy, and they're wonderful. In the event we reach 2021, and we're not able to consummate this deal as the city and the developer believe, what options does Goodyear have in that event? And if the deal is not consummated to its fullest extent, what is the bottom line cost to the city of Goodyear? That's my question.
Thank you. Do we want to address that? City manager? Brian Dawkey?
Yes, I can answer it a couple of ways. The first is, if it's not delivered by December 31, 2021, the reimbursements for public infrastructure goes away, so Mace Rich would not be receiving those. It would still be required by the development agreement to make the assessment payments. We would also, though, have to look at what would happen if Mace Rich wasn't here, and there's a lot of speculation that far out into the future, as far as what that would look like. I would tell you, though, that the agreement does protect the city in terms of the reimbursements up to, and we do have $25 million of improvements that we are obligated to, and beyond that, we are not obligated for additional reimbursements to them. But it would be speculative for me to state where we would go if they did not go forward at that time. But we'd certainly, we're keeping our eyes on this, we've been working with Mace Rich over the last several years, and continue to work with them. So at this point, I can't speculate as far as what it would be.
All right, thank you. Susan, and you'll have to, Seshir? Cashir? I think I couldn't hear it. Did she say Seshir? Seshir. Seshir. Welcome, Susan.
Thank you to the mayor and for the council people who...
Could you pull the microphone up?
That's true. Thank you for allowing me to speak and express my concerns. I've lived in Goodyear since 98, and in the valley for almost 35 years. I love the malls. I remember when Arrowhead was built, there was really absolutely nothing up there but an orange grove and a few houses. So saying, well, we need more houses, more stores, more restaurants, before we can take a chance on Goodyear, seems a little disingenuous, and my question is, had you known in 2006 that a 15-year build-out was probably the norm, would you still have agreed to have a contract with Mace Rich or West Core at the time? I think I question the commitment here. There's always an excuse as to why there's another delay, and I understand their needs. We've had some economic downturns, I agree with that. But somewhere along the line, we have to just suck it up here and build it, because when you have a mall, then you attract more businesses, you attract restaurants, you attract customers, which also increase the sales tax generated. As far as putting a theater here first, my husband and I are huge film buffs. I would say average, we go to the movies about three times a month. Clearly, sometimes more, that's an average. I don't think we need to have a theater next door. We have plenty of movie theaters around. Putting that in as the first just doesn't do it for me, I'm sorry. I'd rather have some stores. And as far as the Internet effect on businesses and shops, the reason a lot of people frankly shop online is because there are no stores. You know, build it and they will come. I didn't used to shop online, but frankly, I'm tired of driving an hour to the nearest mall. And I encourage you to either build a fire under this development company, or perhaps find someone else that is more willing to work with Goodyear and build the mall. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one, would you like to address anything on that? Okay. Pat Crocker? The next one, would you like to address anything on that? Okay. Pat Crocker? Hello? Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see her back there. Take your time. I just didn't see you in the back.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for letting me throw out my feelings tonight. I have, my name is Pat Crocker. I live at 10830 South Coolwater Drive in Estrella Mountain Ranch. I've been there since June of 1991. I enjoyed all the amenities at the lovely little mall that we used to have where we now have Total Wine and it was an outlet mall. Remember that?
I remember. I was here.
Yes. It was lovely. We miss it terribly. And we'd really like to have something like that sooner than 2021. We, I am currently retired, have a lot of retired friends, have a lot of retired acquaintances from all over the country and Canada. And we go out frequently. Today, we spent the entire day in a bunch of bucks in the city of Glendale. We had tea. We toured a chocolate factory. We had wine. We shopped and we went to a bakery. And, you know, we do this stuff all the time. We've been doing it for years and years and years. We don't want to go anywhere else. We'd really rather stay here. And I agree with Susan Cheshire, the first choice of having a theater to start it off is going to make this whole thing go away. We don't need a theater. We have a theater. And it does nothing to bring anybody, you know, kids go to theaters. We go to theaters also. We enjoy movies. But the reason we go to a certain theater is because they have wonderful shops. They have wonderful restaurants. And we do a whole day thing. It's not just to go to the theater. So, I just don't think that that's an amenable plan. I think 20, you know, like I said, I've been here a long time and I, you know, understand the economy. I started my own business here in Goodyear in 1999 and brought a new business here. And I just, I really was so appalled to hear that it's been moved to 2021. You know, we joked about it today. Who's going to be driving us? And we really don't want to go in our wheelchairs. You know, we'd like to enjoy it before we're too old. So, I just really, my biggest point is I'm concerned about the theater. I really am. I don't think it's going to help anybody at all. So, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much going forward. I think that's the end of the speaker cards.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. So, I'm going to go on then and ask that you read resolution by the title only, please.
Adopt Resolution 14-1670, approving a second amendment to the development agreement with West Cor Goodyear LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company for the commercial development on approximately 341 acres as part of a regional shopping center to be known as Estrella Falls, generally located between Pebble Creek Parkway and Bullard Avenue and between Virginia Avenue and Interstate 10 within the city of Goodyear and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Could I please have a motion as second? So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Laura Tano and a second one from Vice Mayor Brazil. And we're open for council discussion. Vice Mayor?
City Manager, question for you. Could you expand on, again, first of all, there's nobody more disappointed in the mall not coming than me. I hear 24/7 why we don't have shopping. Trust me on that one. But we have tried over the last, I don't know how many months, and can you just give a brief history? You didn't cover it in your PowerPoint presentation, the Retail Coach, how we've tried to come up with the stats, how we've tried to provide them to the big box retailers, how we try to provide them to even developers on our market, which is typically larger than your, you know, circle of what, seven or 10 or whatever it is, square miles. We have a much larger range where shoppers come and shop here. We've done that. We've even brought in an external who understands the commercial real estate to try to get this perfect. Can you kind of hit the highlights of that, you know, to show our efforts to date, to try to move this project along?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Great points. They were not brought up in tonight's presentation. One of the things that we've been really trying to push hard is be aggressive and again, working with Mace Ridge and even on our own to try and bring about this mall sooner. So, one of the things we did is we hired a company out of Austin, Texas called the Retail Coach. And we asked them to take a look at our demographics. And on the demographics, I can explain a little bit. Certainly, we can have Mr. Newland explain the demographics more as far as what they look for. Let me tell you what Retail Coach did. What they did is they looked at the current discretionary spending. They looked at the market area. They looked at the amount of money that could come and support a mall given our market area. Their findings are we could support one today. And what they mean by that is they went through and they looked at the different types of stores and the market area, the demographics and psychographics, et cetera, to determine that it could be supported. We then use that information and certainly Mace Ridge has been doing the same with their research team. But we provided that to department stores. And we, as a demonstration that we were, you know, serious about this as well, we felt like we could sustain a mall today. And certainly, the mayor was part of that process as well in talking to executives from Macy's. But as part of that, it really came down to, yes, the numbers will support it. But Arizona's in a tough market right now in terms of rebounding from retail. What we found out is while we could support it, then it really gets at, are the anchors ready? They move at their timeframe regardless of what the statistics will show and bear today. They look at it from their own perspectives and not just as strictly, can you support it today with, given your market area? They have a lot of other things that they consider as well. So, at the end of the day, we felt like we did what we could do. We had a couple of meetings with corporate and Mace Ridge as well in trying to strategize together as far as trying to make this happen sooner. The end of the day, as Mr. Newland pointed out, it is the anchors that really drive that process. So, I'd ask Garrett if he has anything he wants to add to that as well.
Yeah, thanks, Brian, Mayor, Vice Mayor. We've tried to stay as close as we can to city staff, meeting with economic development people. We've taken our whole leasing team on tours of Goodyear on a regular basis to make sure that they're fully aware of all of the growth that is occurring in Estrella Mountain, in Pebble Creek, and other communities, neighborhoods within Goodyear. I'm on a helicopter three or four times a year with key retailers, doing a market tour, flying Goodyear, showing them the growth. And, you know, what it comes down to is population. You've got population and you've got growth, which is very significant. And you've got income. That's really what the, at the base level, that's what the retailers are looking for. As Brian mentioned, in spite of our, all of our demographic work, even the work that we got externally from you, presenting that information to our department store partners, wasn't able to commit them to go forward. Resoundingly, they said, look, we're not looking anywhere else. And when there's another mall built, that's where it should go. That's the right location. But we are not, we are not prepared to commit to timing of 2014 or 2016. Couldn't even tell you if it's 2017 today. But that is the right location. And so, that's the program that we, you know, that we have before us today to move forward.
Okay. Just to follow up, one of the things though I was looking at, and again, there's nobody more disappointed in this mall not coming than myself. But the first thing that kind of concerned me is number one, like any business, and again, I teach finance and accounting myself. If I've got $3.5 million or $3.3 million going out each year and I've got 50-plus and all of a sudden I have no way to recoup the rest of my investment, my question comes down to, do I full tank? Do I try to sell it if we don't get a way of doing that? I mean, to me, that's just smart business. So, the question I look at, okay, what can I ask from the developer to ensure there's more skin in the game? In other words, more investment, more dollars so that number one, the investor's going to think twice about leaving because now he sunk more money into the game or to the pot. Hence, the other anchor, which is the theater. Now, I think, and again, that's where I tend to agree, I think the theater itself is going to be several millions of dollars of additional investment of this developer. Number one, it's got, puts more skin in the game, which means it's going to be, in my view, more difficult for them to walk away. Could they still? Yeah. But there's more money now. More money on the table for them to do that. Second of all, with the restaurant pads, because I go to the theater, yeah, usually maybe twice a week, all right? Because I'm a big movie buff myself. And to tell you the truth, I've got to go outside of Glendale, either Northern or whatever.
Outside of Goodyear.
Outside of Goodyear because the one here, I'm just not real fond of, all right? So, with that in mind, my thoughts are with that actual theater and those pads, it's going to drive, I'm hoping, this is my thought, it's going to drive the traffic. It's going to drive the need for them to speed up the date for putting the rest of the stuff in. It's going to be the synergy I'm hoping for because I'm thinking positive so that the others will look at it as well as Wincow that's coming in now. When Wincow starts to develop, when the Oregano shows up in the other stores, now you're going to get the traffic where maybe Macy's is looking at 18 or 17 because now they're seeing some traffic going. That's kind of my vision on why I wanted something in addition to just extending. Because to me, that would have put no more skin in the game. So, that's where I'm kind of coming from with this. Do I think it's probably the best we could have gotten? Yes, or I would have asked for more. Okay? I didn't want to walk away and lose that $3 million assessment that they're paying, number one. Now, again, it could have got tied up in bankruptcy. They could have ended up selling it off, which may have been four or five years. Who knows how long that would have been? So, it would have been sat there anyway. All right? And then again, who pays the $5 million? Yeah, we got the lien on it. But the bank or the other partners that are in with Matrix will probably end up soaking that up. And there, where do we go? There's only so many of them that actually build these type of retail establishments. So, that's my thought process coming in here. Wanted to make sure there was enough, again, additional skin in the game. So, number one, that they follow through. And I think the synergy hopefully will bring those other large boxes to get this going because we need shopping out here. I personally believe it would fly now. But again, I'm not the one making the $200 million decision. Okay? All right? Because from what I hear from, everybody says they're shopping outside. I'm shopping outside and I don't want to shop outside. But for the stuff I've got, we're just not here. Quality retail, in my view, on things that I want to buy are not here. So, again, it's coming. I just wish it'd come sooner than later. That's all.
Can I add to his, just so you can talk? Can you help the residents understand the ownership of the land? Because I hear this comment all the time, well, listen, let's just say no and let's us go out and build a shopping center. Do we as the city of Goodyear own any land and what are our legal rights? That kind of goes on with yours. So, I just want to...
And just a couple of comments, Mayor, Vice Mayor, before I talk through ownership of the land, just to get to a little bit more on the Vice Mayor's comment. Yes, we're heavily invested and committed already today. This theater, the total theater investment will be 12 to 15 million or more, creating the opportunity for more pads to come. That's additional investment that we'll make. And remember, we're making $3.3 million a year in payments. So, every year that we go forward, that's another $3 million. We've got the additional $1.25 million that we'll be making in December as well to extend the impact fee prepayment. So, as you indicate, we are committed and we are further investing heavily through this agreement and even over, just over the next two years to get the theater open. So, I do want to, I do want to support the comment that yes, we are getting more invested as we go forward. As far as what is owned, can I get a, here we go. This property right here that I'm highlighting is the market at Estrella Falls. That is a joint venture, Mace Ridge Globe. We've developed about 250,000 square feet so far. There's another couple hundred thousand square feet that will come along as the market continues to mature. This property is the Evergreen Center. This is owned by, I believe, Flood Control right here. Actually, I believe this is, this may be the Flood Control parcel too.
I think so.
This property is owned by Globe Corporation. These are separate property owners here. Mace Ridge owns this large piece of property here, which is the regional mall site. It's 107 acres. We do own that fee. And then these properties that run along Bullard Wash are also Globe, Globe ownership that we have an interest in.
Thank you. I just wanted them to be able to look at this to see that because I kind of want to have them rethink when they say, well, Goodyear, just go out and do this. You can do this. We have, there are certain legal rights that we don't have. So, you know, if, you know, if, just give us the circumstances, kind of, okay, we're going to say, okay, no, we're not going to do this. Go away, Mace Ridge. Give us, give me an idea. Give the audience an idea. Where would we be at that point? You're not a lawyer, I know.
Well, Mayor, again, where I would go on that is that we're committed. And, you know, what we cannot do, nor I believe any other developer anywhere could do, is build it and they will come. That, you see a few centers that are very vacant today where that philosophy has come forward. You know, we don't do that. We build successful projects that we then own for the long term. And we need all of the retailers to come together at one time to move forward. What we're asking the council to do tonight gives us the confidence to deliver a phase one and know that we'll continue to get our investment recouped through sales tax reimbursement as long as we perform, as long as we continue to deliver sales tax generating uses that allows us to get our funding back. If we reach a point where that is not the case, then we have to make a different decision. And that is, that is the truth.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Wally in a moment because before I forget that she's there. But I will say that I've heard a lot of comments from Mayor Wilcox of surprise. And she's waiting to see what our decision is here tonight. So, just, there could be benefits from other people on this. So, Wally, I'd like you to speak up now because somehow I forget that you're there. So, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everyone, the public coming tonight and joining us to give us their input. I told so many of them, if they wanted to be heard, come to the meeting. And I'm so glad that they're there. We all are disappointed that this mall is not going to be built now. We know the reason was the economic downfall. But there's so many reasons for us to be optimistic for the future. First and foremost, Mace Ridge has shown a strong commitment to our community, both financially and otherwise. They've committed millions of dollars to the city in the form of infrastructure and impact fees and continue to make it known that they are as committed today as they were in 2006 to seeing that this project will be a successful completed mall. I know we would like it sooner than later. I'm one of the guilty ones. I don't have time to drive to Arrowhead. So, I jump online to Macy's or Dillard's or Amazon and I order online and have it mailed to my house. And yes, when the mall is built and it's up and running, I will be there as much as everyone else because I want it to be in my neighborhood. I think that the agreement tonight will start for the city, the first steps in developing a regional shopping hub, entertainment mall that we all want. A movie theater may not be exciting to some folks, but I know a lot of young folks that live in Goodyear that would love a wonderful new theater to go to. I would like to take my grandchildren to a new theater. All of us, all of us on council want this mall as badly as everyone in Goodyear. And we have to believe that Mace Ridge will be a good partner with us as they have been in the past. And together, we will work to see that this project is completed. And I want to thank them for coming tonight, for explaining to the public where they are, how this has come about, and explain their commitment so that the city knows that the council, the city staff, our city management are all working hand in hand to get this mall developed. As the economy gets better, I know we will be able to be successful and I'm hopeful that we'll have the mall completed long before 2021. And I plan to be alive then and be one of the first shoppers. Thank you, Mayor.
You have to come there, Wally. Thank you very much, Wally. All right, Councilman Stipp?
You know, Wally...
You know, Wally, I wish I shared your optimism, I'm not sure if I'll make it that long, but anyway, um, you know, we have, uh, before we got ready for tonight, knowing, knowing everything that we've done behind the scenes, for as long as we've been working on that, and then knowing how our community feels about this mall, it's been a very, very difficult road. So I, I'm gonna say I jotted down a few comments, but it actually got carried away, but, um, but we, you know, we've been working on this, on this mall project since I came on council in, in 2011. And during that initial campaign, there was even talk of, "We're getting ready," and the economy seems to be, seems to be turning, and we've, we've had several of these "we're getting ready" moments, that we are so hungry for this, we all jumped on. And, um, and that has been very frustrating. Several months ago, we, we all heard the statements and Garrett, pardon the, you know, personal, uh, but, you know, Garrett talked about them earlier, the, the famous comments from, as they say, someone familiar with the project who said, "The mall is coming." And that was the first time we'd heard from someone official, and we all got excited, and we waited. At the same time as we, as you start to read about retail, we really begin to learn that retail is changing. The same time that this individual was making comments about the mall coming, Macy's was making announcements about laying off employees and cutting stores. And if Macy's, one of the largest retailers in the country, is going through layoffs, it didn't, I'm not an economist, but it didn't take long to figure out that the face of retail was changing. We continued to receive updates, Mace Ridge has been very good about doing that. We even commissioned the retail study to demonstrate our community's ability to support a regional mall, yet the anchors are not ready to commit. Despite whatever we give them, whatever information we provide, it's really their failure to commit, and that is very frustrating. We've expressed that frustration to Mace Ridge and to those anchors, and we tried to dig our heels in, we even got to the point, much like a child who didn't get our way, we said, "If you don't build, we're just gonna walk away, we'll let you walk away." And then reality, we really had to continue our partnership with Mace Ridge. Despite how we really felt emotionally about this, the business end of this deal is about the partnership that we have with this agreement, that we had with the first agreement in 2006, and that we've had every day since then. We have amended this agreement once, and we did that at the start of one of the worst economic downturns in our lifetimes. We've all wondered why the outlet mall was built, and how so many, um, successful development, I'm sorry, we all wondered why the outlet mall was built. And we've seen, um, successful development, which is based on risk, and in this case, Mace Ridge is taking all of the risk, not the city. They consistently, um, I'm sorry, they construct and develop, uh, an enclosed mall, it is not the same as an outlet mall. And one of the, this whole process has forced me to learn a lot more about retail than I really, probably ever really wanted. The city cannot force Mace Ridge to build this, nor can Mace Ridge force an anchor to sign a lease. So what do we do? This is where we are tonight. We have two choices. We can say no, and let the property fall, more than likely into bankruptcy, which effectively takes this property off the market for six or more years, just like we had with the ballpark property. That property, yet today, still has not been sold, and it sits vacant. Our other option is to support our partnership and gain a desperately needed amenity for our city, albeit it's not anything great, it's not anything we're gonna put up, uh, put on the billboard, so to speak, but it is an amenity that the young families in this community have been crying for, "Please get us someplace that we can at least take our kids to see the movie." Councilmember Pizzillo was right, we don't have very many options right here, we have to drive to go to the movie theaters. The last time we amended this agreement, we received prepaid fees as a show of Mace Ridge's commitment to us. They've also been paying all along, so their commitment has never been in question. Tonight, we get the first phase of the mall, started with what is effectively an anchor, who is actually anxious to build in this city. We will hear tomorrow from, from this theater, a pretty exciting plan of something that's very unique for our area, something that no one else has, it's not just a 12-screen theater, it's something very exciting. And I'm looking forward to, um, seeing that press release in public, and, uh, and then perhaps our outlooks on this may change. While I'm not particularly happy that we have to wait, and I'm certainly not happy that I have to drive 25 miles to shop at a regional, at a regional mall, uh, I am happy to continue to look forward and do what is in the best interest of our city in the long run. Today, we want the mall. If we build it today and it sits vacant, we will have nothing but a magnet for gang activity, and, uh, just something that we've all seen as we drive through various parts of the country. That's not what we want here. We're in this for the long haul, the decisions that we make tonight about water earlier, about, uh, the change to this development agreement are about the long-term success of the city.
Thank you, well said, some very fine points in there. Councilman Loretano.
I wanna thank everyone who came today, because I know this was near the end, and it's getting rather late and everything. I, I understand how retail has changed. I've lived in the valley for 40 years, in Goodyear for 20 years. I remember, and I'm gonna always refer to you as West Cor, because that's what it's always been in my mind, my first job was at Penny's and Expressions in Paradise Valley Mall. I remember Metro Center, but there's been such a constriction of retail. I mean, I go through the anchors, we were talking, someone talked about Arrowhead originally, there was a Goldwaters there, a Diamonds. Goldwaters got eaten by Federated, which, which was Robinson's. Robinson's got eaten by Macy's. There was a, a Diamonds that became a Dillard's, there was a Bullocks. Metro Center had Liberty, Liberty House, Rhodes, the Broadway, Brian's lived here a long time, I, I can name off all these department stores that were there in the 70s and 80s. And basically, Federated took a lot of the chunk of them, from other states too, Washington, Bon Marche, I think they even took Bloomingdale's, and a lot of that became Macy's. So our options, and, and JC Penney's is another one. JC Penney's in Goodyear has a standalone store, so we really can't have them as an anchor. So when we look at all the severe constrictions on what was at Montgomery Ward's, there's another one. What were the anchor stores originally? We just don't have those options to say, "Okay, if Macy's isn't ready, let's get this other store." So we have to look at what our options are, and really, who's left standing under this retail environment? It's unfortunately not the same environment that I grew up in, the malls aren't the same. Um, I have three generations of my family, my parents are retired in their 70s, and I have children, so I understand, this mall needs to serve not just the retired population, not just my population, and not just, you know, younger families and, and children, it needs to serve everybody. And I, I think this plan will do that, when we get the shops that we want here. I would love to see some fun, trendy shops, but also in retail, they do come in clumps. One thing about the retail market is that when the anchors come, certain stores come with those anchors, and that's why you see the same over and over. So I think, when this is all said and done, we're actually, under the agreement, going to have three anchors, the theater and two additional large-scale stores. Also, when we look at this agreement, and, and there's been some concerns about the, the scope of the mall, and, you know, everyone on this council, I was on planning and zoning when the first version came through, and it was an outdoor mall, and it was gorgeous, and then retail swung a little bit different. And there are some successful outdoor malls here, um, the Biltmore is a successful mall, Scottsdale Fashion Square used to be outdoor, and they enclosed it, so there, there's lots of different options. I think we have to, we will hold them, I can guarantee you, to a very high standard. If you look at Scottsdale, it's an enclosed mall, but with the atrium in the middle where they enclosed the Camel View portion of that as well. So I, I think we will hold them to that. I don't think anybody on this council, and anybody in the city is happy that we have to, and I, I don't think Matric, you know, is, is happy either that we have to delay this. I, I don't think there's one person that's saying, "Yay, we need to delay this." I think everybody would want to move this forward, um, because it does benefit Matric. They have basically empty land, um, right now. So I do agree, putting the theater there, and putting the restaurant pads that have to be sit-down restaurants, these cannot be fast food, they cannot be drive-throughs, they have to be actual sit-down type restaurants. And I, I think when we look at places where this is done, this is a good economic engine, if, if you go over, um, there's one up at Prescott Valley where there's a theater, there's no major mall there yet, and there's several, um, sit-down restaurants, there's lots of action there, there's lots of things going on, there's people of all different ages, because there is also a large retirement community up in Prescott. So when you look at that, I think there can be a, a plus for our entire population. I hope everything is successful, and I, I plan to support it, because I too don't like to drive to Scottsdale, or try to, or to Arrowhead to try to get something. But I think when we look at our options, and this retail market, and where the economy has been, and I think that's also something that history has showed us, this is the first time Arizona has always bounced back quickly from a recession. If you look at every single recession that we have gone through, we hit the bottom, and then we have always sprung back up. In the 80s and 93, we've always sprung back up, even after 9/11, it was a rather quick spring up. This time, we haven't. This is something new for the Arizona economy, and when you look at our economy, we have stagnant wages, um, we think we can support it, but as Councilman Stipp was saying, when you look at Macy's at this time, when we were looking at the mall, you know, closing stores, they closed a couple in Arizona, laying off people at their corporate reorganizing, that's a message that they're not ready to expand, and we can't force them to expand. We also just look at retail in general again, and we look at Staples and Office Max, and a lot of those consolidating, and closing their bricks and mortar stores. It's a different generation, and, and young people like myself, when I used to hang out with them all in high school, um, it, it's changed. Everyone, you can order from one of these now, everywhere you go, and, and I think it isn't just because it's not convenient, I think it's a whole mindset, and it's a generational mindset. So I think we need to look at that as we build this mall, and we need to make sure that we have community input as we build it, and I, I think that our, our planning and zoning, and our council, and our staff is really gonna hold that, that when this is built, it is something that is going to last, it is not going to be an empty white elephant, that is something that will enhance the community, enhance the area, and that is what I'm looking for. So thank you.
Councilman Holman.
I just wanna make a couple of brief comments, and that is, I want to thank everybody who has sat through this lengthy meeting with us, and for those of you who shared your thoughts, they're meaningful to us, and I hope after listening, you have come to the same conclusion that I did, and that is, we have a team effort here going forward, that there's been very, very careful and very thorough thoughtfulness put into what our options are at this time. I've been in the business world for about 30 years, and I have to tell you, I'm very confident that what our staff and what Mace Ridge, um, has done is really look at the market and see what is, what is feasible for the long run, and we don't wanna do junk. And so I, I just appreciative for all the hours that have been into this, um, and they've been very thoughtful, and it's sometimes painful. But I think Bill said it very well, and that's twice tonight I've agreed with you, Bill? Put that one on the calendar? And, um, I just think that, um, he put some very thoughtful thoughts together, and that is, this is for the long-term folks, um, and that's how we have to do it. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor had one more question.
Just, just real quick, uh, where does Prasada fit in this?
Well, that was my indication, that was my indication about the mayor of Surprise.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I wondered when that was gonna come up. The project in Surprise, it's similar to Goodyear in that there's a lot of property that's gonna develop over a long period of time. You're seeing auto mall development, you're seeing Walmart that opened there, we have another power center that we'll be working on, but the regional mall is very much further into the future than the mall here. The market there is, it's just not ready for a regional mall. And your retail coach would tell you that, if you just look at the population numbers and the demographics, we hope to build a regional mall there too, in the future, but this regional mall comes first. This is the next, uh, the next one in the valley, for sure, Goodyear.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I wanna, uh, thank the group that came tonight, I really do, and I know we've had some personal kind of conversations online and off the line, um, and I know it's not easy to come up and to express your feelings, and have to do this in this open forum, but I know you really wanted to do it. The group that came up tonight, I identify with. I, I wanted to see a city center before I die, I wanted to see a new city hall before I die, and I certainly wanted to see the mall, I've been on this council since 2005. Now, when you say, uh, it, back there, we talked about, "Well, I wanna, you know, before I'm gone, I wanna be able to have things." I'm 76 years old, you think your mayor doesn't care? Do you think your mayor does not want this mall to happen? No. And we have worked, time after time, meeting after meeting, um, the executives have flown in to meet with us personally, have had personal conversations with them about the mall, all along. The movie theater, I, I can remember the meeting we were at, when I, when I brought this idea up, and the reason I did is because my council talks about entertainment, and how the public wanted entertainment, and for the average age of Goodyear, which is 35.8 or something like that, rounding that name, that was number one for them, they wanted some kind of entertainment, you know, either a bowling alley, which I have to tell you, I've tried and tried and tried, to get a bowling alley like the Surprise has, and if Mace Ridge has any pressure on that, you know, I'd love, love to have that, I don't think a lot of people in here in Goodyear have seen that bowling alley, it's not a bowling alley as one would think, but, uh, so it isn't that we haven't tried, it isn't had, I haven't wanted this, um, it, it happened, and it wouldn't have been nice, if the downturn hadn't come, we wouldn't have had our city center, because it was on the docket to, to be built. If the downturn hadn't come, there were a lot of things were gonna, there were a lot of companies that were gonna come and plant their feet in Goodyear and provide jobs, couldn't come. So, um, everything, I know, seems so easy, um, and, um, and you think that there's just going to be a number of anchors that are gonna be able to come, and so I can tell you, from the research we've done, and from our economic development, who's worked very hard, there are not many big department stores or anchors around the country that want to come to this side of the country. We mentioned a number of them, and they just don't want to come to the west, they're not ready to do that. So there's, there has been just one berry after another. So, we didn't get our way, we haven't gotten it, but I think we're going to. Whether we're going to be here for that, you don't know, I don't know. You know, when I wake up in the morning, say, "Another day, let's go for it." So you just never know. So, um, I, I have to take my selfish feelings away, and think about, as the council does, not just for my little group, and where I live, and how we live, and transport that all over the city, it's not that way. We have 73,000 people from different kinds of families, different economic levels, different desires, the whole thing, and so we have to look at this as a city. And so as a city, um, I'm just gonna extend my thanks to you, because Garrett, you, they've kept the door open, they allowed your mayor to sit in meetings and talk that wasn't, you know, it wasn't always polite talk, and they allowed me to express my feelings, and we did that over and over again. They also have allowed us, the council, to question you, and to investigate, and ask for studies, and all the things we've done. And I don't know if there's any avenue that we haven't pursued on this, and when people on the outside say, "Oh, this is so easy to do," I know a friend who told me that this will happen, all I have to do is call that friend. Well, I can tell anybody in Goodyear, if you have someone like that, you need to bring them forth, and you need to have a conversation with their economic development. We are open, and as, I hate to use his expression, but as the mayor of Buckeye says, "We're open for business, our door is open, we don't close it." And then I want, just before we go, to close this up, city manager, talk a little bit about our economic development. City manager, talk a little bit about our economic development. What we do on the side of recruiting for stores coming in. So it's not just Mesa Ridge out there looking, we're looking. So just give us a capture, capture that moment for me, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also may call up Kim Bradford, who's our interim economic development manager. But one of the things the staff does is, we attend shows such, we call them shows, or trade shows, International Council Shopping Center. And we hit that in Las Vegas. And we have scheduled many, many meetings with different retailers and users, if you will. Most recently, we were in California. We had two staff from the, our economic development department actually went over there and spent two full days with many, many appointments trying to sell Goodyear. We take information with them, we sell the city. We, we not only work just staff itself, but we work with commercial retail brokers, site selectors, we certainly even, not even with, but with Mesa Ridge as well, while we're at these, these different events. So we, there's a lot of networking that goes on within the retail community. And then locally, it's also the retail brokers that represent sites, not just at the mall area, but up and down the McDowell Road corridor where all this infrastructure is in. So it is a continuing effort to promote the city of Goodyear, to bring in retail and entertainment. I would tell you that the one thing that council did is, we've reestablished the economic development department. What that does is that even puts more resources for our economic development efforts. That's not just, of course, for retail. That's small business now. We have a small business project manager on board that's really doing a lot of work and, and has provided updates to council. We have a team that works with the industrial side, the commercial office side, the medical side, the aerospace side. So a lot of efforts, day in and day out, are devoted to economic development with a couple of key goals. One is, is let's get businesses here to invest. Let's bring jobs here. Let's bring jobs for our citizens, but also bring people from outside our community here for jobs. We want to be one of the largest job centers in the greater Phoenix area with all the land we have set aside around the airport, thousands of acres that are set aside to be one of the largest job centers in greater Phoenix. So the effort is, is continuous and we're putting additional resources at it to make that happen. So hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you very much for clearing that up. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. So now I think we're ready. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Thank you very much. So let's go to seven point seven to adopt the results of the special election held on November fourth, twenty fourteen. Maureen Scott, city clerk, will present.
Good evening, Mayor Lord and council members. The item before you is to canvas the November fourth special election for Proposition 483. That's twenty twenty-five general plan. And by state law, the election has to be canvassed not less than six days and not more than twenty days after the election. Final results have been received and the twenty twenty-five general plan passed with nine thousand three hundred and eight votes. There was three thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine votes opposing it, which ended up with a passing rate of seventy point oh five percent. We had a forty-six point six voter, forty-six point six percent voter participation for this election. The November election was an all-male election where all city of Goodyear registered voters received their ballot in the mail. And there was some confusion with this election because some voters still thought that there were polling locations and that caused confusion on Election Day. City Hall was an early voting and ballot replacement site in Goodyear and that opened on October ninth. And overall, Election Day went smoothly due to moving it into the larger room, having more equipment and more staff to help the voters. The lines did get quite long, starting around four o'clock and continued to remain long until the polls closed. The city of Goodyear has thirty-five thousand one hundred and eighty registered voters. There are twenty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-one voters on the permanent early voting list. That means that they have chosen to receive a ballot in the mail for all elections, regardless if it's a polling location or if it's all male. Sixty-seven percent of our registered voters have chosen to be on that permanent early voting list. By state law, if we don't have anything on the ballots in the fall of even years, Maricopa County will have to still have polling locations. And if we do have something on the fall ballot, then it will go back to an all-male election. Those on the permanent early voting list will still receive their ballot in the mail, even though there are polling locations. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. And I ask you, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Will the city clerk please read resolution by title only?
Adopt Resolution fourteen dash sixteen seventy-four, declaring and adopting the results of the special election held on November fourth, two thousand and fourteen, and ordering the recordation of such resolution.
Thank you. Could I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stip and a second from Councilman Lortano. Open for council discussion. Councilman Lortano.
I just had a question. Up in Estrella, I guess there was some confusion. I just wondered if there's a way, because obviously it's going to switch if we have something on the ballot or don't, how can we get that out so we don't have that confusion?
Councilmember Lortano, Mayor Lord, there was quite a bit of advertisement that went out for this election and also in the ballot itself, there's a blue card that it's, it states directly on there that it's an all-male election. And so that information's in there. We, we did a lot of information and even the county and the state put out information about all-male elections. Not sure what else we could do, just keep trying to get the word out to citizens to let them know that we are all male and that our Goodyear, you know, city hall is a replacement site.
And so, but Estrella was for to pick up ballots from somewhere else? I guess because there were voting signs out there, people got confused?
What happened there, I think, is it was a polling location for county islands. And so those people that don't live in Goodyear probably got their information in the mail saying that was their polling location. And so there was confusion that people thought that they could go there. And unfortunately, they were not able to help them with their ballot. They'd have to come to city hall and they were not happy about coming down the hill to have to come to city hall to, to vote. And also another flyer from an organization went out to Estrella Mountain Branch residents stating that that was their polling location, even though they were Goodyear residents. So that was bad information that went out too. So, so definitely some confusion there at that one.
Have you talked to them, the county, about trying to improve on some of these areas? You know, how, how do we, you know, like the, the notice that went out that had the wrong information? How do, are they aware of this?
Mayor Lord, I did share, we had a problem with the August relation, August election and I did share because another flyer went out to, with that same information. I did share that with them. And so I'm not sure if they're going to be reaching out to those organizations that's putting that information out. We did meet with the county before the November election to try to, you know, clear up some of these issues. And they tried to put some more information on their website and, and, you know, just trying to get more word out. So we'll continue to work on that and try to, you know, get this more clear for the citizens.
I guess, I guess what I'd like to see is that you observed quite a few things that you, you saw and that could be a change in. So can we make sure that we, we continue, we have that information for next year or whenever the next election is, so that we don't have that happen? So I thank you. You got, you worked really hard, our team did. They were downstairs in one twelve, it was wonderful. And I appreciate, I appreciate the hard work you put in.
Thank you, and they did, they worked very hard and we're just helping everybody and had great attitudes the whole entire day. So it was great.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
All right, are we ready for roll call vote? Go ahead.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. All right, now's the time for informational items. Anybody want to talk?
I have one.
Okay, Osborne?
Well, I just wanted, actually, Nathan, you'll love this. I, I had to share this because, you know, we talk about all the things that we'd like to see in our city. And I happened to see on Facebook from a young lady that lives in our central part of town, in her twenties, that said, night ride, all bundled up because it was too cold for us Arizonans. Seven plus miles riding the cool trails through Goodyear. So many secret tunnels around the neighborhoods. And I just thought, hey, that was a great thing to see that the twenty-year-olds are out there riding the bike. And then, and then she ends, we love our beach cruisers. So I just wanted to share that with you.
I appreciate that. Any other, Councilman Stip?
Just two very generic comments. Obviously, well, actually just one. I'd like to just publicly thank Katie for her service in the city manager's office. I know today's her last, last hurrah up there, but we've, you know, been a big help, not only up there, but just everywhere, you know, that you are in the city. But I wanted to say thanks.
Anybody else? All right, we're going to, I'm going to close this. Oh, I'm sorry, Ryan.
Just real quickly, Mayor and council.
Your moment, sorry.
I, I do want to echo Councilmember Stip's comments about Katie. Had the extreme privilege of being able to pull her into the, serve as the assistant to the city manager over the last five-plus months. Did an amazing job, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of activities were put on her plate and she came to work with a smile every day and just, and worked very hard. As you know, she worked very hard on the council retreat. And then, by the way, she got the general plan. So that was her baby.
Oh, by the way, huh?
And got that across the finish line while she was working in our office as well. So Katie, thank you very much. Very much appreciate it. Mayor, one other announcement. Last week, we received the distinguished budget presentation award. And that's always great because what that is, it's the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting and it's a, it's a big achievement for the city. So in order to receive the budget award, we had to satisfy the nationally recognized guidelines. And they're designed to really assess how, using the budget document as a policy document, a financial document, an operations guide, and even how we communicate that information out. So Larry, just want to thank you, your budget division team. There were many, Amy Lindsay for a role in coordination of the book, John Casella, Tracy De Soma. I'm sure, Kim, you had something to do with it along the way, as well as you were the interim budget manager. So, but just, that, that's great work and it really does show transparency in government. The last thing I would just, there were two follow-up items. One is, is we will have information on the front entrance to the city hall, all the budget items that were pulled together for that. So we'll have that as part of our presentation, that came out of the work session. And then finally, we'll do the administrative change for the parking lot at Wincow as well. So those were the two follow-up items, Mayor and council. But thank you.
Great. Well, what we're going to do here is adjourn this meeting and then we'll go into the next meeting and then we'll take a break, okay? So, all business done, meeting adjourned. Okay, I'd like to call to order.